Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the April 5, 2023 regular scheduled meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain commissioner, Cameron Sapata?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for who you are. We acknowledge you in all of our ways. We thank you for this day and all of the time that we have here together. We ask you for wisdom, Lord, for all of the county commissioners here, Lord, and everyone that works for Hillsborough County. We pray for all of our firefighters, those in law enforcement, all of our first responders, Lord. We thank you for your protection over their lives. We thank you for your protection over everyone in Hillsborough County. And we pray that we will be a county that is united and not divided, and our nation also, in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. The first item this morning was a very special award for both the Board of County Commissioners and the people of Hillsborough County. It is our pleasure to present the 2023 Ellsworth G Simmons Good Government Award. First, Vice Chair Commissioner Myers will present the history of the award. Commissioner, you're recognized.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Chair.
The Board of County Commissioners established the L.G. Simmons Good Government Award in 1996 to honor an individual or group for the significant role they play in improving government through leadership and vision. The Ellsworth G Simmons Good Government Award is named in honor of a respected government and civic leader who served seven years on the Hillsborough County School Board and 21 years on the Board of County Commissioners. Through Mr. Simmons' effort and involvement in such initiatives as the University of South Florida, Tampa International Airport, and the University Community Hospital, he helped transfer Hillsborough County. Since the first Ellsworth G Simmons Good Government Award was presented to the late U.S. Representative Sam Skivins in 1997, Hillsborough County has the pleasure and honor to recognize the achievement and lives of 26 individuals whose dedication to public service has strengthened Hillsborough County's legacy. Past winners included Florida Speaker of the House, H. Lee Moffett, Judge E.J. Sarsena's, Governor Bob Martinez, Hillsborough County Commissioner Jan Platt, and Hillsborough County Commissioner Leslie "Les" Miller. Last year's recipient was public defender of the 13th Judiciary Circuit of Florida, Julian Hope. First, I want to recognize the Simmons family and other members of the award selection committee. We are very pleased that we continue to have a member of the Simmons family involved in this award. Michelle Hendry, would you please stand, just so we can show some love to you, if you're here? Okay. Well, let's just show some love anyway.[294.12][294.12](APPLAUSE). The late commissioner's granddaughter, served every year. We also want to thank the other committee members who made nominations and recommended the finalists. We appreciate their service. Some of them are here today. If they could please stand as I call out their names. They are Brenda Thor, Committee Chair, Demaris Allen, Freddie Barton, Kim Daughtry, Joe Ginger, Karen Girasco, Rhonda Storms. Well, Rhonda would be the last person. Thank you so much for what you do for this committee on behalf of Hillsborough County Government. Let's show some love. Thank you.[353.31][353.31](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. And before I introduce this year's recipient, I too want to thank the committee for all of their hard work in finding the perfect recipient for this award, especially my representative, Brenda Thor, who's served as chair, I think, for the last 10 years or so, who does a great job. So again, thank everyone on the committee for all of your hard work. The individuals who earned this award over the last 27 years have had a profound positive impact on Hillsborough County. These leadership the community and what it is today. I'm very pleased to introduce this year's recipient, Clara Reynolds. Clara, if you could please join me at the podium.[396.31][396.31](APPLAUSE). Clara, it's such a pleasure to have you here this morning. Today, we're honored to recognize an amazing person whose groundbreaking work has helped countless children and victims of trauma in Hillsborough County. And her experience in the field speaks volumes. After earning a bachelor's degree in psychology and master's in social work from Florida State University, Ms. Reynolds worked as a social worker at Kinley Elementary School in Hillsborough County, and then as a child protective investigation intern for the Florida Department of Health and Rehabilitative Services, now known as the Department of Children and Families. While serving as a social worker for the youth services program of Hillsborough County Public Schools, Ms. Reynolds was instrumental in helping children in need. Her duties included conducting individual and group counseling for foster children and young people placed in residential and day programs by the juvenile justice system. This work is heart-wrenching but also rewarding, and it takes a special person to do so. After becoming a licensed clinical social worker and earning her master's in business administration from the University of Tampa, Ms. Reynolds served as project manager for the multi-agency network for severely emotional disturbed children and youth, also known as SEDNET, for Hillsborough County Public Schools. At the same time, she became a co-founder and executive director for Success for Kids and Families, a nonprofit corporation that uses a system of care values and principles to provide children and their families with a comprehensive array of services. During her tenure, the organization flourished, growing from an original budget of $300,000 and seven employees to a budget of 5.7 million, 65 employees, and 50 independent contractors in just nine years. What an incredible achievement. Her work at Success for Kids and Families led her to be honored as Tampa Bay Social Worker of the Year by the National Association of Social Workers. In July of 2015, Ms. Reynolds reached another pinnacle in her career when she was chosen as president and CEO of the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. The Crisis Center is a nonprofit organization that provides help to people facing challenges from trauma due to sexual assault, suicidal thoughts, domestic violence, financial distress, emotional or situational problems. Under her leadership, the Crisis Center has undergone a significant multifaceted expansion, most notable in the growth of the annual operating budget over 23 million. While ensuring that the organization always stays true to its mission, Ms. Reynolds has enabled the Crisis Center to add new programs and services where there are gaps in behavioral health needs throughout the community. This includes expanding the organization's contact center to answer lines for Tampa Bay Thrives and the Florida Council Against Sexual Violence, and expanding transcare services to include a community paramedicine program to reduce the burden on local hospital emergency rooms. The Crisis Center's growth will continue this year, when thanks to the support of the county, a second sexual assault services center will open in Ruskin to serve residents in South County. Under her leadership, the organization was accredited by the Council of Accreditation as an overall agency, a status that confirms the level of care and strategic processes that are vigorously followed to provide the best care possible to each client. Within recent years, Ms. Reynolds was also instrumental in the Crisis Center being recognized as a top nonprofit to the Tampa Bay Business Journal's One Tampa Bay Awards in 2017, 19, 20, 21, and 22. Ms. Reynolds, you've provided tremendous leadership to Hillsborough County and the state of Florida over the years. The value of your work to the vulnerable people you serve and the many positive impacts you have had on our community cannot be overstated. This honor further illustrates how significant your accomplishments have been. Your service to others is an example to us all and embodies the spirit of the Ellsworth G Simmons Good Government Award. It's my privilege to recognize your achievements today. In addition to this trophy, your name will be added to the perpetual plaque that lists all of the Ellsworth G Simmons Good Government Award winners. It is displayed outside our boardroom on the second floor on County Center. We're so grateful for your work. Now, it's my pleasure to present you this trophy to a woman who I truly admire and have known for probably 12 years now or so, since our sons played Little League baseball on the same team, about a decade or so. So it's great to see not only you again, but your husband Steve and son here as well. So with this, it's my pleasure to present this trophy to you. Congratulations.[678.73][678.73](APPLAUSE). Please say a few words.
Well, good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. There are so many emotions that I feel right now, but overall, I'm just really humbled and so very grateful to be here today. And I want to thank the county commission, the amazing committee. Thank you all so much. And to Mitch Thor, who so fabulously nominated me for this award. When I found out about this incredible honor, I went and reviewed all of the past award winners, and it really is unbelievable to be standing here with some, be recognized with some incredible people as well. So I feel very undeserving of this, but it certainly is an incredible honor, kind of the pinnacle for me. When I became a social worker 30 years ago, my goal was to help people and make communities better. And I have been very fortunate to be able to do that here in Hillsborough County. And to be able to stand here today, though, and talk about the importance of this award, this Good Government Award, at a time when many of us are very cynical about the role of government, it's wonderful to really be able to highlight the incredible partnerships that nonprofits like mine, for-profits, all of us working in collaboration with government do to make our community better for people. And as Commissioner Hagan said, you know, we've been very fortunate to have incredible partnerships here with the county. Opening that second sexual assault site is really going to make a huge impact in our community for those individuals who have been sexually assaulted, who live in Ruskin and Wy Mama and Sun City, and, you know, that they can actually get services right there in their community. But that's just one incredible example of how we've been able to partner with government. Nancy Milan has been a fabulous partner in the tax collector's office, getting 211 cards, 211 flyers and bills, doing public service announcements. Our partnership with Hillsborough County Schools has allowed the Crisis Center to put 211 cards in the hands of every single student, both in public schools and charter schools, to ensure none of those kids have to face crisis alone. We have partnered with law enforcement, Tampa Police Department specifically. We are getting ready to actually add some staff into their communications center to help individuals calling 911 in a behavioral health emergency, being able to provide them help and support so that law enforcement doesn't have to come out. And certainly, we have a huge partnership with the best airport in the country, Tampa International Airport, through our Travelers Aid Program, helping travelers increases. None of that happens without partnerships with government all across our community. Government is the vehicle by which we can make this work happen. And so I am so grateful to be able to be here today, to be able to continue this innovative work, these incredible relationships. And so truly, on behalf of myself, my amazing husband Steve, our beautiful son Corey, who came in today from the University of Florida for this award, I truly am humbled and grateful and just thank you all so much.[870.01][870.01](APPLAUSE).
I know most people in this room know Clara, but for those of you that do not, now you can see why she's an incredibly special woman and why I'm very proud to call you my friend, Clara. Thank you for your dedication, leadership, and service to Hillsborough County. And any commissioners want to make any comments before we take a picture?
Clara, just like to say thank you for all that you do. You are all over Hillsborough County promoting everything, in particular with human trafficking and saving lives. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Let's take a picture. You want to give it to Steve and Corey? Get them to come up. Again, congratulations, Clara, and to you and your family and all of your friends that are here in support of you. And now Commissioner Cameron Sapata will present our next proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would Mr. Ellsworth Williams please join me at the podium? Good morning and thank you for joining us today. As a veteran of the United States Army, I strongly believe that nobody understands the needs of our nation's defenders and can better respond to them than those who also wore a uniform of one of our military branches. That is what makes Veterans Counseling Veterans Incorporated so special. Led by Mr. Williams, this nonprofit organization offers a vast number of services through its equally vast network. We are very fortunate to have such a successful, passionate group of individuals caring for veterans and their families in our community. It is with great admiration and appreciation that I present this following commendation. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners applauds Veterans Counseling Veterans Incorporated for bettering the mental wellness of active military members, veterans, and their families by providing comprehensive services and supports that ensure no need goes unmet. Headquartered in Tampa, Veterans Counseling Veterans was founded by Ellsworth Tony Williams, a decorated Army combat veteran who honorably served for more than 24 years before retiring in 2007 and earning a master's degree in clinical mental health counseling. The nonprofit organization's "We Are You" motto perfectly describes the passionate work of dedicated counselors and other staff who personally know the challenges the nation's defenders face daily. They successfully employ a teams approach, which stands for teaching, engagement, advocacy, mentoring, and service. Veterans Counseling Veterans provides a multitude of services and resources, including engagement and referrals on such sensitive issues as military sexual trauma and veteran suicide, caring advocacy for assault victims and survivors, and mentorship. More than 800 active military veterans, veterans dependents are now part of the Veterans Counseling Veterans Network, a tremendous achievement. This organization is a treasure that enhances the entire community. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Veterans Counseling Veterans for its steadfast commitment to the welfare of active-duty veterans and their families. Devotion that saves lives and lifts spirits and wishes the organization continued success executed this fifth day of April 2023." Mr. Williams, congratulations.[1197.23][1197.23](APPLAUSE). I want to thank you and your team. Thank you and your team for serving our veteran community. Thank you. And we'll just go up here and have a photo also.
Thank you so much. Yes, yes. Do you like to join Mr. Reynolds?
Please, everybody that's invited, please come up here. You are the village. You are the village.[1230.15][1230.15](APPLAUSE). This is what the village looks like. Can the village form a mood? Don't you do that. There you go. One, two, three.
Now Commissioner Cohen will present our last proclamation this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Before I begin, I want to make sure that I mention that later on today's agenda, we will be taking up a water issue that relates to the cooperation between Tampa Bay Water and Hillsborough County in addressing some of our short-term water needs, particularly in the South County region. And as we get ready to proclaim Water Conservation Month, I just want to highlight how much great work is going on, particularly in Hillsborough County, with some of the really innovative and creative things that we're doing related to making use of our one water resource. And there was a great article in La Gazeta recently about what we're doing, and it was very, very impressive. And it boiled down a lot of very complicated things into a few paragraphs, and I urge people to read it because it was very informative. So with that, I would like to ask Amber Smith, Senior Government Affairs Regional Manager for SWIFTMUD, to join me at the podium. Good morning. How are you? Water is our most precious resource. We need it to sustain life, and we must do everything we can to conserve it, especially since we live in a drought-prone state. Hillsborough County Public Utilities does an incredible job of providing water, conserving it, and producing reclaimed water for distribution to residents and businesses. This helps protect the environment. Its partnership with the state of Florida and SWIFTMUD has proven to be extremely helpful in our community's growth, and it is my pleasure to present this proclamation to Ms. Smith, recognizing Water Conservation Month and Florida Water Reuse Week. So here is the proclamation. I am not going to read the entire thing, but I am going to just highlight the main points. And I think the most important is that Hillsborough County has joined the state of Florida since 1999, including SWIFTMUD, in designating April as Water Conservation Month to teach residents ways they can help save Florida's water resources. And water reuse conserves Florida's limited water resources and has designated May 14 through May 20 as Florida Water Reuse Week. In addition to encouraging Florida-friendly landscaping and its beneficial uses, Hillsborough County and SWIFTMUD promote water conservation through a wide variety of educational efforts, community outreach, water use restrictions, agency partnerships, and funding and construction of reclaimed water systems. And whereas such conservation efforts have resulted in an overall decrease in the average daily water use per person in Hillsborough County, whereas small steps can make a big difference, and water conservation is as easy as installing simple water-saving devices in the home and using Florida-friendly landscaping techniques. So therefore, we are declaring this Water Reuse Week and Water Conservation Month. And Ms. Smith, I invite you to say a couple of words before we have a few photos. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Commissioner and the commission. I had the fortune to be born in Hillsborough County, and 40 years ago, it looked pretty different. But I'm really proud that over the last four decades, I've been able to live in a place that has really valued environmental management and water conservation. And we are really in a unique and really exciting time right now, where we can really marry science and technology with water conservation and environmental management in a way that we can really just be a lot more efficient with the water we use and still be able to develop and grow in the way that we want. So thank you so much again. I look forward to seeing where we go with our county.[1561.83][1561.83](APPLAUSE).
Before we take a photo, I just wanted to ask if any of the commissioners wanted to say anything. All right. Okay, Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a few revisions or corrections to the agenda. Item A4 is to authorize the Affordable Housing Services to draft the first substantial amendment to the Plan Year 21 Home Investment Partnership Program and to approve setting a public hearing to be held on April 19 in order to receive additional public comment and adopt the first substantial amendment to the Plan Year 21 Home ARP Allocation Plan. Item B1 is a new time certain. It is 10 o'clock. This is to direct staff to not arbitrate Tampa Bay Water's application for water use permit for South Hillsborough County production well. This is related to item B3 and also to the Special Environmental Protection Commission Meeting. Item B3 will also now be at 10:00 a.m. to approve and execute the agreement with Tampa Bay Water for the South Hillsborough County Production Well, also related to item B1 and the Special Environmental Protection Commission Meeting. The Special Environmental Protection Commission Meeting will now be at 10:00 a.m. related to items B1 and B3. Item F1 will now be at 10:15. This is Commissioner Hagan's item for discussion regarding considering pursuing a baseball-softball tournament facility and indoor athletic complex. There are several items that have been removed from consent for either highlighting, commendation, or announcement by Commissioner Wostol. These are items A25, 26, 54, 55, and 60. We have several items for a time certain. Item B1 at 10:00 a.m. to direct staff to not arbitrate Tampa Bay Water's application for a water use permit for the South Hillsborough Production Well, related to item B3 and the Special Environmental Protection Commission Meeting. Item B3, also at 10:00 a.m., to approve in the execution of agreement with Tampa Bay Water for the South Hillsborough County Production Well, related to item B1 and the Special Environmental Protection Commission Meeting. 10:00, the Special Environmental Protection Commission Meeting, related to items B1 and B3. 10:15, item F1, Commissioner Hagan's item, discussion regarding considering pursuing a baseball-softball tournament facility and indoor athletic complex. At 10:30, item E1, to receive a presentation by Dennis Carlton, Chair of the Agricultural Economic Development Council, AEDC, on the 2023 Hillsborough County AEDC Strategic Priorities. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion, approve the changes?
Move, approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp. Second, Commissioner Myers, please record your vote on the changes to the agenda. Commissioner Cohen?
The line is not coming out. Obviously.
I'm voting yes, but I'm...
Motion carried seven to zero. All right, the board will go into the public. All right, the board will go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from the citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. Our heart rate is request at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issue. The board has set aside 45-minute period in the morning for public comments. The board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting at the discretion of the Chair. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which their requests to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. Up to three minutes will be provided for each speaker. The first three speakers this morning are Dr. James Davison, Josephine Amato, and Kimberly Overman. I believe Dr. Davison and Josephine Amato were virtual.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Davison, I'm here today to congratulate you on finding the money in the Community Block grant to design and construct sidewalk improvements in the Plant City area. It will certainly improve the quality of life in most communities. What is even more amazing is that $382,000 is about 70% of the total amount of money you've budgeted for sidewalk repair for the whole county, but you have just increased your budget by 70%. Budgeting sidewalk maintenance at $550,000 per year and having a black backlog of a 1.6 million linear feet, it will only take 400 years to just catch up on the backlog and cost just about $220 million in current dollars at $135 per linear foot, a daunting number, but completely fixable without raising taxes. To do this would take a much-needed change in how we look at our infrastructure problem and how we plan to fix it. The board should be aware that the TPO's new 2050 Long-Range Transportation Plan is likely to contain a new one-cent sales tax to become effective January 1st, 2029. They will also not include a penny of a renewed CIT tax, or about $6.5 billion. I guess the TPO figured that there is a better chance of passing a new sales tax in November of 2028 than a vote to continue the CIT tax in November of 2026. That is pretty amazing, since just in their last long-range transportation plan, the TPO used 100% of the CIT tax. How can this happen? The county and the TPO are supposed to be cooperating by federal and state statute on these long-range transportation plans. I can only assume that someone on this board or this administration told them to include a new transportation sales tax and leave out all of the CIT. For the sake of an improved quality of life for everyone in the county, please instruct staff to give the TPO staff the real numbers they estimate going forward for the next 20 to 30 years so that they can at least use reasonable revenues. Have a wonderful day, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Davison. Next speaker is Josephine Amato.
Good morning. Can you hear me, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners and Honorable Members of the Environmental Protection Board. I know that the lineup was kind of confusing. So my name is Josephine Amato. I'm an involved community member here in Hillsborough County. I live in East and South County. I'm here to speak to you today regarding several concerns our community has involving maintaining clear established protections of our environmental lands and our protected fauna and animals. I live in a community that's intertwined with the environmental land. We have 16 protected animals, three endangered animals, countless protected fauna. In 2003, the Fishoff Creek Preserve was revised and established clear environmental protection boundaries regarding redevelopment. The key features of our preserve, the natural vegetation that contains the majority of Wichita land, is very rare in the scrub sandhill communities in the state and local regions. Recently appears that land use has not coincided with our environmental protections to protect our resources and our ELAP. And one of my major concerns is included in 2003 was the Girl Scout land and the Boy Scout land that was part of the Lithia Springs and the Fishoff Reserve. We currently have approval for that land to be developed, but that's not coinciding with the environmental protections of the lands that should have been considered. That happened after the land use hearing. We've recently had a cell tower approved, but we have no report of how the soil stacks are protected, endangered tortoises that live in our community right next to the cell tower and them reproducing. We are intertwined with the ELAP in our amazing, beautiful Lithia Springs. And if none of you have ever been to Lithia Springs, I encourage everyone to come out and see our beautiful, amazing resources here in Hillsborough, that in that preserve community, we have protected eagles, we have protected wood storks, the gopher tortoises. These are endangered species. And as my son was doing his eagle project out in the alephire, we were speaking to the ranger about our resident panther. And if you've ever been out here to see our panther, who now kind of goes through our little dog park, he has a wide range from alephire all the way to the preserves. And right recently, that one of the developments has approved a road to bypass 301 that would increase traffic. One of our number-one killers, Georgia panther, is traffic, and this is along our panther's path. My concerns are the permits that are on the tarmac of land use, both have zero public studies of how the cell tower will impact our protected species, of how the road will impact our panther. We also have a car wash that is literally on the land that's intertwined with Lithia Springs. And all of the water goes into this storm drain directly into our aqua hall, directly into the spring. And what is happening is the environmental part is happening after the permit part. And this is a developer who was trying to bypass permits unless one of our community members called the county and said, hey, permits are not being done, but things are being done on the land. And this is one of my primary concerns that's happening.
Thank you, Ms. Amato.
And I'm asking the Commission.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. We appreciate it very much. Next speaker is Kimberly Overman. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. It's good to see you all again. I want to say thank you to you, and I'm speaking actually on G1, I believe it is, but it actually relates to this morning's proclamations and accommodations. Hillsborough County has amazing partnerships with nonprofits and private organizations that provide the services to our residents on a daily basis. They fill the gap that would require the county to hire thousands of employees to be able to serve the residents that live here in our county in areas that are so critically important to our economic welfare, our health welfare, and the well-being of our residents. I'm pleased to see that you're taking a look at our funding when it comes to nonprofits because you'll see great work being done. And you'll see the great work of our county's finance folks that have to keep track of all that great work. But I just want to say thank you very much for actually all that you do for the residents of Hillsborough County. As you heard this morning, when you have public servants who actually work within our nonprofits, with Clara Reynolds, who have served in so many different ways. Part of the funding that was mentioned this morning to open up the service center in South County was the work that we did together on human trafficking to make sure that those in those in that area didn't have to try to get all the way up to Beers when they were in trauma and in need of care. We have made some really smart partnership arrangements with many organizations that have done things like help our young people that are in high school find careers that they can do and thrive so that they can take care of their families. There's many, many opportunities for partnership with nonprofits that have helped our county be the best county in the country, as far as I'm concerned. So I want to say thank you for shining a light on that. Thank you, Commissioner Wustel, for brooding that on the agenda and making sure that all of our residents can see what those great, great partnerships do and how frugal and fiscally responsible we are for developing strong partnerships with our nonprofits to get the job done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Overman. Our last two speakers on the agenda items are both virtual, Buddy Harwell and then Sharon Calvert.
Yes, good morning, Board. This is Buddy Harwell, Vice President of the Balm Civic Association. I'm just calling in to speak about the B1 and B3, the test well down in our area. I wasn't aware that this was going to be voted on until I talked to Mr. Waltsel last week at a public meeting. We've had multiple meetings with Tampa Bay Water and Hillsborough County about these wells in our area. We still have a lot of residents that are concerned that this is going to have an impact on our private wells because all of Balm does have private wells. I know they did do a test subject on this well a year or so ago, but the problem is, whenever they tested it and they said it caused no problems within the area, we weren't advised that they were doing the testing. So how do they know that it didn't affect any of our wells while they were doing the test? So just asking you to consider us down here on the private wells, because I know after this gets approved, there's possibility of having four or five more wells drilled in our area and thus, you know, lowering our water, you know, reducing pressure, causing issues. I did, two, three years ago, have to put a new system on my well because within a month, it started getting dark tasting, having odors, and I hadn't spent almost $3,000 on a system. So I just ask that you be careful going through these steps and consider us down here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harwell. Sharon Calvert.
Sharon, can you hear us? Sharon, if you can hear us, please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
If you can, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm Sharon Calvert, and I'm President of Victor Rhodes First. I'm commenting on the agenda item F1, pursuing a baseball tournament. In this time of economic uncertainty, high inflation, and the need for roads and infrastructure to be funded in Hillsborough County, I think that that is a want and not a need. So at this point in time, I ask that you, during the discussion, that that discussion on F1 ends with a resounding no, resounding no. The needs of Hillsborough County must be funded first, and again, we are in a time of economic uncertainty. And as you go through the budget, which you're starting now, you must fund our roads, and so vote no on F1. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Now we'll go to off-the-agenda public comment. There were 13 individuals that have signed up. Most appear to be regarding TECO rate hike, and we welcome comments from anyone on any issue. I just would like to remind those that are going to speak that this is a Public Service Commission item that's not under the board's purview. Well, we do not have any direct authority on this. That being said, we welcome your comments, and afterward, we will have a staff member available to answer any direct questions that you may have. First three speakers this morning, Stephen Kaufman, followed by Brooke Ward, and then Jeannie Gaffari. Mr. Kaufman?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much. My name is Steve Kaufman. I'm the pastor of the Church of Our Saviour in Tampa, a member of the League of Women Voters and also active with Water Watch here in Tampa. Like almost all of us in Hillsborough County, my wife and I are totally dependent on TECO for our electricity. And unlike many, my wife Deborah and I have enough income to pay the unrelenting increased cost of electricity to date. But honestly, I do wonder about the future. And what about the thousands of folks who already are forced to decide whether they're going to pay their electric bill or buy their groceries or get their pharmacy? Rate hikes are the direct result of TECO's reliance on fossil fuels, my friends. New rates have been approved already. They're effective April 1st. I got a delightful letter yesterday detailing all the hard work TECO is doing. But TECO's tenure plan commits to more fossil fuel. I'm coming to you today to ask for your help, not just for my wife and I, but for all residents of Hillsborough County, especially because those impacted most are the least likely to have a voice in the matter. Tallahassee is too far away. This is where you can help us. It's true, you don't have the ability as an organization to directly affect this, but I ask you to consider urging our PSC to hold in-district service meetings and workshops. We need to get people to the microphone. We need to be able to say something about this concern, and there, I think you can help us. Transitioning to clean renewable energy will protect our climate and lower the cost of energy for every one of us. Thanks for your time, and happy Easter.
Thank you, Pastor. Brooke Ward, followed by Jeannie Gaffari. Good morning.
Well, good morning. My name is Brooke Ward. I'm the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch and Food and Water Action, and I'm representing 5,437 Hillsborough County residents. I'm here today because our electricity bills keep going up, but customers are removed from the process. And what do I mean by that? Well, in the last four years, the average Tampa Electric customer has gone from paying approximately $99 a month to now paying, as of this month, $162 per month. In that timeframe, there hasn't been a single customer service hearing, workshop, or town hall in Tampa Electric service area, meaning that the folks that are impacted by these hikes aren't able to comment on or take part in this process. Last month, the Florida Public Service Commission approved two new rate hikes that take effect this month. Once again, fuel costs went up another 10% due to the volatility in the price of fossil fuels, and customers are also paying a new increase due to storm recovery costs. These decisions were made in Tallahassee, over 275 miles away, without any input from a single TECO customer. Unlike other services that we contract for, our utilities hold a monopoly, meaning that customers do not have a choice in where they get their electricity. This makes it all the more important that they have a voice. Years ago, the Public Service Commission, or PSC for short, held in-district customer service meetings, so this isn't an unheard-of concept. We are also petitioning the PSC, along with you, so that the PSC will bring meetings to our service area, but we need your help. As our elected representatives, your voice carries weight. Also, as one of TECO's largest rate-paying customers, your opinion matters. We ask that you oppose these volatile rate hikes and that you urge the Florida PSC to bring back in-district customer service meetings and give your constituents a voice in how our energy is generated, just as we have a voice here with you today. Thank you so much for your time. Have a beautiful day.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Next speaker, Jeannie Gaffari, and I apologize if I'm butchering your name. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Jeannie Gaffari. I'm a Hillsborough County resident, an environmentalist with Sierra Club, and a board member of SUAC. Our utility bills are too high and rising as we speak. The tragedy is that the customers are removed from the process. Rate hikes were decided without input from those who pay the extra costs. The customers who pay the bills should have access to the hearings. How are TECO's customers removed from the process? The meetings to discuss the rates are only held in Tallahassee on weekdays. The majority of TECO customers couldn't travel four hours and 275 miles to attend these meetings. Most people work Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and some have no transportation. Most employers will not allow a day off. Most employers will not allow a day off for their employees. And working-class people cannot risk losing wages, loss of job status, or even losing their job. I care that the most vulnerable people, the working class, who are impacted the most, are left out of this process. Bills are often 10% of a low-wage earner's income. This week, on the Next Door app, a public forum, my neighbor said he felt desperate with the rising rent, rising insurance, and rising utilities. More than 50 people commented in response that they had the same concerns. They fear their future. What is the solution that would allow TECO greater transparency and allow TECO customers equal access to the process? I think holding in-district customer service meetings is the solution. TECO could show transparency, and their customers could have access to the rate process. HCC, I ask you to urge the PCS to hold in-district customer service meetings or workshops. It is only fair that those paying the higher bills have access to the hearings. HCC Board members, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Marilyn Worlick, she's virtual.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much, and good morning. I'm Marilyn Worlick, and I am a member of Food and Water Watch, retired social worker and living in Hillsborough County. And I, too, am here out of a concern that in my life, I see how many of our young folks are under so much financial stress, under the times that we're in, and that we're missing opportunities to convey our support for their hard work and pressures, such as TECO's costs going up without offering any dialogue within which these young families can feel they are heard in their challenges. Indeed, learning that TECO's tenure plan commits even more fossil fuel investments, yet there will be increasing costs, we can be certain. Indeed, when people touch their lives, these issues become real. And just a couple of examples, I have friends who work at the grocery store, and they're on their feet all day, the long hours, the constant demand. They are so weary when they come home. Another young person is just beginning their career as a teacher, and can only afford to rent a room out of a house due to cost of living and student loans, and now learns the utility payment will go up yet again. As said before, these folks can't make a trip to Tallahassee, and yet they are hard-working, honest folks who need to be heard, so we can come to solutions that are livable for all of us. My husband and I were able to make investment in solar panels years ago, seeing that the fossil fuel investment TECO chose to continue with only guaranteed more cost in electricity. We also want to support cleaner and sustainable energies. Most families cannot afford this investment. Our leaders need to take serious assessment toward cleaner, sustainable energies while including citizens most impacted by these increases, and a dialogue of these challenging costs for fossil-fuel-based energies. Again, I'm asking Hillsborough County Commission, we know you can't force PSC to hold in-district hearings, but you have influence in persuading them so that we can have dialogue at a local level and discuss the realities that we're all facing as a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Worlick. Next three speakers in person, Mary Elizabeth Estrada, Todd Randolph, and then Nicholas Rakumar, I believe. Ms. Estrada? Okay. Todd Randolph? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Hello. My name is Todd Randolph. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County, and fortunate enough to cast a voice for our TECO customers who will be burdened the most by TECO rate hikes. The deliberation of TECO's policies to be held in Tallahassee and not in this community, which pays for and lives in the decisions made far away, stifles the ability for this community to voice concerns on TECO policy, in particular gambling away our future by continued TECO bets on fossil fuels. It is the least fortunate of our neighbors that will be burdened the most by the rate hikes that are occurring due to our reliance on fossil fuels, and the ability for them to express this burden is suppressed by not having in-district discussions on TECO policy. In the past, public hearings on policy have been held in district, which is a fair and just practice that allows for community participation. I'm asking the Hillsborough County Commission to do what they can to see that the PSC hold the public hearings again in Hillsborough County. We know that fossil fuels are finite. We know that they are becoming harder to extract, and the consequences of extracting and consuming them are contributing to the deteriorating state of our local and global environment. We know that they are becoming more expensive. They have proved to be a fiscally irresponsible gamble. Relying on an increasingly scarce and increasingly expensive commodity is betting on a losing hand, and continuing business as usual is the easy way out. It is not our nature. I'd be squandering the opportunity to create a sustainable society and passing on the costs of our current energy production onto future Americans is deferring responsibility. Denying the constituents to voice how fossil fuel reliance has affected them by taking away in-district hearings is taking the easy way out for energy companies. I appeal to the County Commission to see what they can do to have the PSC hold these policy discussions and hearings again in Hillsborough County.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Is there Nicholas Rakumar here? Okay. David Sinclair, followed by Craig Powell. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I chose not to bring my notes up because I want to speak from the heart. My name is David Sinclair, 8434 Pebble Circle, Tampa, Florida. I belong to LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens. I'm their new state director. I come to speak to you about the opportunity you have to show that democracy works. We need to have the hearings in district for the Public Service Commission so that residents of our community have the opportunity to voice their views on utility rate hikes. Show that you believe in democracy. Show that you believe that people who live in the community can speak for themselves within their land. This is where we live, Hillsborough County. We know the farce of having to travel 275 miles to be present in somebody else's land up there to speak. You have the opportunity to show who you are. You are from Hillsborough County, and you have the right. Let people who do not have the voice, do not have the time and money to leave their jobs, to go far away to speak here in their land. You are the people of Hillsborough County who represent us here. That is what we ask, to ask the Public Service Commission to have the in-service public customer service meetings here in your community. Stand up for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Next three speakers, Craig Powell, followed by Sarah Edwards, and then David Coleman. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I keep an eye on this light here, huh? Good morning. Craig Powell is my name. I am here, in part, to recognize National Second Chance Month. I don't know if any of you all knew that. Every April is National Second Chance Month. But I'm here with some old news and some good news. Old news is second chances related to individuals who've been convicted of a felony and incarcerated. I and a group of community folk were in the prison just a couple weeks ago, meeting with a fairly good group of individuals returning to Hillsborough County. Do you know that there's over 2,500 Hillsborough people convicted from Hillsborough County in prison right now? And every year, there's about a third who join that group, and a third who's released from that group. I'm here to share with you, as you may already know, that there's a problem with criminal justice transactions throughout the country. Here in Florida, being the third-largest prison system, you know 33% of our inmates are less than 35 years old, and that although, and I must mention this, 16% of the Florida population is of African descent, 48% of the prison population is of African descent. But a couple other comments related to Hillsborough County. We are not the largest county in the state. We're the fourth-largest. However, we have the highest recidivism rate of the 10 largest counties in Florida, and we send more people to prison than any other county in this state. Now, I'm not sure anyone here has the answer to that. I can tell you the other three counties that are larger than Hillsborough all have task forces. They have developed strategic plans. That may be coincidental, or it could contribute to why we are disproportionately represented in the prison system. That's old news. That's been going on for years. The good news is, I'm part of a group who's just gotten a federal grant for the next three years to make a difference in this problem. And I'm here today to let you know that there's a growing group of community folk, nonprofits like myself, who are wanting to move this issue, get off the dime.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
I'm hoping to work with you all in the near future to make a difference. We need your help. We need your help.
Next two speakers, Sarah Edwards, followed by David Coleman. Good morning, Ms. Edwards.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Edwards. I'm one of your constituents here in Tampa, and I'm here today because I'm concerned that TECO's tenure plan is committing us to a dangerous path for energy affordability, the climate, and my children's future. I'm also very concerned that the Public Service Commission in Florida apparently thinks customers should not have any say in this. Here in Hillsborough County, we have seen our utility bills continue to rise while the cost of clean renewable energy continues to fall. This is because TECO has continued to rely on fossil fuels for our energy. Fossil fuels are extremely volatile, and the past couple of years have demonstrated this with devastating effect. The backdrop to these rate hikes is that Hillsborough County residents have also seen some of the largest rent increases in the country over the last couple of years, and are struggling to pay their energy bills, all while utility executives and shareholders have taken home enormous profits. TECO is clearly doing what is best for its shareholders, not its customers. The Florida Public Service Commission's website claims them to be, and I quote, "committed to making sure that Florida's customers receive some of their most essential services, including gas, electric, telephone, water, and wastewater, in a safe, reasonable, and reliable manner." I would argue that allowing utility companies to double down on volatile and demonstrably harmful fossil fuels at a time when we are facing a climate crisis caused by the use of fossil fuels is not safe, responsible, or reliable. Furthermore, the Public Services Commission holds its meetings out of district all the way up in Tallahassee, so ratepayers here in Hillsborough County are completely cut out of the planning process for the future of these essential services. This needs to change, and you have the power to influence this change. Rate hikes are a direct result of utilities' continued reliance on fossil fuels. Since utilities pass all costs of fuel, pipelines, and power plants directly to the public, a tenure plan that continues in this vein effectively locks my children's generation into decades of reliance on fossil fuels for their energy needs. In effect, this means they will not only have years ahead where their energy costs continue to be more and more unaffordable, but also that as future ratepayers, they are literally paying for the ongoing destruction of the environment and their future. Renewables are now significantly undercutting fossil fuels as the world's cheapest source of energy. Transitioning to clean renewable energies will not only protect our climate, but will lower the cost of energy for everyone. I urge you to strongly oppose rate hikes and the continued reliance on fossil fuels by our utility monopoly, and to urge PSC to hold in-district customer service meetings in order to facilitate full public participation in these critical decisions about our energy future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Last three speakers this morning, David Coleman, followed by Cameron Pressy, and then Debbie King. Good morning, sir.
My name is Dave Coleman, and it's really sad that 13 speakers were prefaced by, "We can't do anything for you." Anyway, I do echo the sentiments of Food and Water Watch and others here on the topic of TECO. Here is something I've been carrying around for a couple of years. This is from 2001. This is a consent order to close and remove the coal ash piles over at TECO. In 2018, TECO came up with a closure plan, and regarding Hillsborough County and what you can and cannot do. The only thing that I have been able to find out from the Hillsborough County EPA, because this, the original order 21 years ago was done by the state, with fines, $2,000 a day for noncompliance. And then, when I asked locally the Hillsborough County Environmental Commission, they say that they are visually monitoring the progress. Thank you very much. I don't know what that means. Anyway, this is egregious. Coal ash piles, two mosaic stacks sitting over Progress Village. You said that there's nothing that the county can do. I'm going off my script here, but in Nassau County and Suffolk County, where I'm from, 20 years ago, we closed, the citizens closed, the Shoreham Nuclear Power Plant. We said, "You're building a nuclear power plant on an island? How are we going to leave if something goes wrong?" And they literally shut Lilco down, and it became LIPA, a public-private company, with immediate savings to customers. They plan on being 70% wind and solar, in Long Island of all places, within seven years, and they're going to be going fully public, creating a second round of savings for their citizens. So when Hillsborough County Board sits and says, "We wash our hands, it's nothing to do with us, and this state is allowing TECO to do these rate increases, and we have nothing to do with it," please, we're human beings, we're citizens. There are other issues that are going on in the county, traffic, housing, gun violence, crime. I became aware that there's a hotel on my street that, I gotta do this quick, there's children in the middle of the night wandering in the parking lot with adults doing adult things. At 11 o'clock and even at 1 o'clock in the morning, I went to one of my commissioners, and I said, "This is what's going on? Is this what hotel vouchers is bringing us? Can we have a county shelter?" I was told, "No, we cannot have a county shelter."
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
That I was dreaming, and I was told that it was the talent's fault.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir. Next two speakers, Cameron Pressy, and then Debbie King. Ms. Pressy's virtual.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Good morning. My name is Cam Pressy. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County. I'm speaking today because I oppose the new electricity rate hike, and I'm requesting that Hillsborough County Commission urges the PSC to hold in-district hearings. So the reason why is I'm currently struggling to keep up with my electricity bills, rent, and other living expenses, when faced with the electricity increases from TECO that I'll have to pay this upcoming summer. I'm concerned if I can afford to run my air conditioning normally, as I have done in previous summers, or even at all during the day. Despite working nine hours a day, five days a week, I'm still planning living expenses paycheck to paycheck. Utilities aren't included in my lease that's ending in June, so I'll have to stomach the rising electricity and housing costs. Otherwise, I risk losing my place to live in Hillsborough's hectic housing market. I'm sure that's very familiar with everyone here. I like to express these concerns at the PSC hearings, but I'm not able to drive to Tallahassee on a work week to submit a three-minute comment. A 550-mile, eight-hour round-trip drive might cost me $100 or more in gas. A 550-mile, eight-hour round trip drive might cost me $100 or more in gas, plus $150 to $200 from a lost workday. That's $300 for a three-minute comment, or $100 per minute, not to mention the cost of that mileage on my car, which recently needed a $1,500 fix. So my friends and roommates face similar barriers to me as working-class Floridians. This process is simply too expensive, undemocratic, and impossible for working-class Floridians to even express their concerns. If this hearing was held in district, as this one was, at least we might feasibly be able to carpool and take some time off at the beginning or end of our workdays to attend. I know friends who are too burnt out after long workdays to write a comment like I have or to appear here today. They told me no one seems to care about their opinion either way. I really want to believe the opposite, and that my voice matters. Everyone writing and speaking at this hearing deeply values our freedom to express our concerns, and I thank you for being here today and to all the councilors for hearing our comments. So please urge PSC to hold hearings in Hillsborough County to make the democratic process easier for working-class Floridians like myself. Urge the PSC not to raise electricity rates when I and so many other people in our great state are struggling to get by. I don't want my loved ones to end up on the streets. I know the utilities will keep making money even if these rate hikes aren't passed. So please, Hillsborough County Commission, do everything you can to urge the PSC in TECO to hold these hearings in district and to not raise our electricity rate hikes. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Pressy. Last speaker this morning is Debbie King. Good morning.
Is this on? Okay. Good morning. I'm glad to be here to speak with you all. I'm Debbie King, a resident of District 1, and I'm here to discuss the same thing that the previous people have, but just to underscore it, residents in Hillsborough County, for the most part, won't realize what the PSC has done in allowing TECO to raise their rates until they get their bills in a couple months. So we all know that, I'll tell you a story. You know, there's a mom that wakes up in the morning, gets her children ready for school, and puts the air off, or puts it up to 80 or 81 or 85. And then they come home, and they bring it down to 78 or 79, with the children playing their Xbox, if they can afford it, or whatnot, and doing their homework at 78 degrees in their house. A lot of us are privileged to be able to have it lower, but she's going to be doing that, and she's going to be doing that expecting her electric bill to be at a certain amount. And she's not going to have known that the rates have gone up until she gets her bill. And so one of the solutions that we can have for this is that if we have in-district meetings, not only will we be able to have a voice, but we'll be actually able to get that word out so people know what's happening. Another thing people don't know about is what we're paying for. These rate hikes are not to pay for our electricity. They are to pay for pipelines that are bringing in more fossil fuels into Hillsborough County. And this is not right. Our county commission has shown in the past, and our other local government officials, that we are committed to addressing climate change. And yet, the people in Tallahassee without our input are making that so that it's not happening for us. And so I'm here to urge you to make sure, to the best of your ability, that we get those PSC meetings here to not only educate the public, but to make sure that we have the voice and we can actually speak out against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King, for your comments. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Again, I want to remind those that spoke on the rate hike issue, Brandon Wagner, standing in the back with the nice bow tie, is going to be available to answer any questions that you may have on this issue. And then Commissioner Kemp, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, I would. I'd like to thank everyone for coming down, and of course, the obvious that the PSC has their hearings and is, I think it's about, I think it's five directors appointed by the governor, if I'm not mistaken. I didn't look that up. And they haven't been meeting here, but I think that it's true, we don't have to exercise any power, but I think this audience this morning raised an important point about what we may, might be able to do. We know, I know, I think every commissioner knows, people are suffering greatly, not only by their rent and housing increases, but also by insurance. I know this has hit me. I know even now, I didn't, wasn't aware in two months that I'd see maybe an increase in my electric bill, but I just have noticed that it's gone up tremendously. I even looked at my usage to see in past, if it's remained the same type of usage, and it has. I can handle that, but it is incredible to think, and food costs for, you know, what people are facing is just, it's getting to be unbearable. And so I'd like, with that, just to ask first our attorney, Mary Helen, in terms of us at least doing something like a letter to the PSC, I don't know what other avenues that we might be able to have. If you could, please let us know if there's what we could do moving forward.
Correct. When the discussion was going on, I thought, if the board so chooses, you can send a letter. Certainly, we can give some more thoughts to see if there's any other actions that we can take, but I think that's, if the board so chooses, that's a first step.
And at this time, I guess we would, I don't know, to put a letter maybe on for the agenda during the next meeting?
We could do, we could add to the land use, if we want to do that. I mean, if it's time-sensitive and urgent, we could do that, bring it back to the land use meeting, and then we have that meeting in advance of our next BOCC meeting. So if that's the avenue you want to do, then I think that that's wise, and we should. But I don't, we are two time-certaines behind, so I don't want to get into board discussion right now, but I'm certainly open to that if we want to go that route.
I'm just looking for the, you know, answer here, and I think it's very, it's a good move. The other thing that is just very, just for everyone to understand, that's very interesting about the way we are set up, there's four major power companies, I think like 25 municipals in the state of Florida, four major power companies. The other three power companies that cover the state of Florida cover many, many counties. TECO is basically our power company here in Hillsborough County, with very little on the edges outside of Hillsborough County. And, you know, for us not to have a say, or at least a hearing in that, there has been on various things in the past, but I think that that's very good. And also, following up and maybe asking for what I think Mr. Coleman raised, might be a good follow-up to find out the status of that project as well. Not during the same hearing, but in the future.
Okay. Mary Helen, does that, does this require a board vote action?
I think you should have a board vote on it, and then we can make sure that it gets on the agenda.
Okay, so the motion, I understand, is just to draft a letter to come back to our land use meeting next Tuesday?
Correct.
As well as if there, to research if there are any other avenues or ways that we could be involved. Is that, you agree with that?
That's, yes.
I'll second it. And just to be clear, the letter is asking for the PSC to hold a meeting in Hillsborough County, correct?
Yes. Okay. Okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
I'm still not working, but yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. And for those that came, again, if you have any additional questions, Mr. Wagner is available. And again, that discussion will be next Tuesday, our land use meeting. I just want to caution you, we do not have public comment during that meeting. However, the board will discuss the item at that time. Okay, thank you. And we're going to the consent agenda, and I know Commissioner Wollstill wanted to highlight a number of items, I think, before we have a consent vote. Is that accurate, Ms. Wise?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Wollstill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really simple. Just to the general public, these consent agendas get very long and convoluted, and they're not very transparent. So I want them to know that the five items that I've pulled for comment are all general-funded items totaling $1.46 million that could have gone to roads or an improvement of infrastructure and public safety throughout Hillsborough County. And I move these items back to consent. Thank you.
Okay. So can we have a motion for the entire consent?
Move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. By any way, introduce the first two items, I guess?
Yes, sir. We can now go to our 10 o'clock time certain item. The first item is going to be Item B1. This is to direct staff to not arbitrate Tampa Bay Water's application for water use permit for the South Hillsborough County production well. As previously mentioned, this is related to the next item, which will be B3. And then we will break after that and open the Environmental Protection Commission meeting. And that, sorry, we have Lisa Ray, our Water Resources Director, Utilities Director.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, Board. Lisa Ray, Director of Water Resources for Hillsborough County. And I am here to talk to you about B1 and B3. These are companion items that are related to the upcoming Special Environmental Protection Commission meeting. So I will start with B1. We are asking the Board of County Commissioners to direct staff to not arbitrate the South Hillsborough Production Well permit. Now, under the Tampa Bay Water Interlocal Agreement, if the county has concerns or is opposed to a primary environmental permit, we are required to enter into arbitration with Tampa Bay Water on that issue. However, this item is originated by Hillsborough County. We, as you know, we have tremendous growth in the South County area, and the need for additional potable water is real. Through this agreement, we will be looking at adding potentially 2.3 million gallons of additional drinking water to the area. So Water Resources recommends that you approve Item B1, and if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And when I researched this, you know, when I'm, as a lawyer and a new person here on the board, arbitrate is using a pre-suit measure. That's not really in this capacity. We're basically waiving the statutes 120, which requires us to go into this, so that's why we use the word arbitrate in this scenario. So that makes sense, because we need speed on this, correct? That's the whole purpose, that we can't wait till the next meeting. We need to move this along quickly. I know one of the gentlemen that called in had some issues about how this would impact water pressure and whatnot throughout South County. Obviously, we've done all that research, and we're, correct? Could you elaborate just a little bit on that?
Yes. So we have been working very closely with Tampa Bay Water on this, and as you know, we have these Sharp wells in South Hillsborough County. What those have done is they, for years, as you would pump water out farther inland, it would draw in salt water. With the Sharp wells, we have created a barrier, and now we are starting to back up fresh drinking water in the area. So the impairment that used to exist is no longer there. This well, working also with SWIFTMUD, because they do monitor all of these water levels and such, will allow us to tap into this fresh water that has now started to accumulate back in the aquifer to supplement our drinking water. So yeah, there has been a lot of investigation and science that has gone into it.
Great, great. And I want to thank you for your work on this, and obviously, this has been an epidemic and a big problem in South County with my district, so thank you for your work, and to the two commissioners that serve on the board, thank you for all you, you all are doing. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. You know, we've been watching this, and have heard a lot about it for many years now, and how desperately it's needed and anticipated. In fact, we have made it that no one can get their buildings permitted, I believe, in that area until, or they can get them permitted, but they cannot get connected until we have our increased water supplies. I know that there's desperate need in South County, people taking showers and not having enough water pressure, especially during the season that we're entering right now. So I will be supporting this, I'll say that. But what I'd like to understand, just, and maybe this isn't the time, maybe we can put it for another time, for those who have complaints about their well, or believe that it's related to something like this, if they were to have those impacts, the gentleman on the phone said he paid $3,000 himself to do whatever process he had to do to get his well moving again. How is that handled by the county in the event of someone who has that belief or is affected?
So I'm going to ask Kevin to answer that question.
Good morning, Kevin Moran, Environmental Services. That would actually be handled by Tampa Bay Water through their Good Neighbor Policy. If anybody with issues with their drinking water well calls them, and Tampa Bay Water has actually constructed new wells for people impacted by their withdrawals.
Okay. And so is that, everyone knows, I mean, it just seems like there should be, he said he paid for it himself, so I'm not certain.
Yeah, well, that wasn't because of Tampa Bay Water impacts, but back in the old days, when we were having the issues up in northwest Hillsborough, it was an advertised and known system, and we could, we would help advertise that if we start hearing complaints.
Okay, thank you. And I'll move approval.
Second.
We got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen, and Owen. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what I said earlier and just mention that there's been a tremendous amount of cooperation between Tampa Bay Water and Hillsborough County to do everything that we possibly can to find short-term and intermediate solutions to the water crisis in South County that will clearly be solved in the long term by some of the projects that are already underway. And this is just a really good example of where Tampa Bay Water has worked with us. And, you know, three years ago, when I joined that board, there was tremendous frustration over the degree to which Tampa Bay Water was taking the growth in South County seriously. And they have really come around, I think, to working with us in every way that they can to address it, and I see Commissioner Wollstill shaking his head, and we really, we really do appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Excellent comments. No other comments on the item, please record your vote on B1.
Seriously? Motion carried seven to zero.
B3?
I remember when Commissioner Myers used to sit in the seat, and the same thing would happen, so maybe it's the...
Thank you, Chairman. I'm now going to speak about B3, and I'm going to be asking the Board to approve and execute an agreement with Tampa Bay Water for the South Hillsborough County Production Well. So this well is actually, in a sense, a joint venture, a cooperative agreement between the two of us. Tampa Bay Water is providing the well, a pump, and a motor that will allow the water to be withdrawn. Hillsborough County will be providing a treatment facility, and along with the piping that is required to distribute it to our customers. So as such, we ask that you approve this agreement. A copy of the signed agreement from Tampa Bay Water is available for the chair's signature afterwards, and we look forward to moving forward with it. We recommend approval. Thank you. Oh, and I'll answer any questions.
Commissioner Wollstill?
I just want to make sure that Mr. Harwell and his group knows that we will take seriously his concerns and make sure that if any future testing or drilling happens, I will be a voice to make sure that they're involved and that their, that their levels don't go down. I actually grew up on a well and septicated myself, so I understand his worries.
All right, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Kemp.
I'll just do a quick recognition for, and I think Commissioner Cohen would agree on Commissioner Smith, former Commissioner here, just really being hugely engaged in protecting Hillsborough County's interests in this sighting of this and all her work, because I know that it was a big, big, big lift. And as well, Commissioner Cohen, you working with her, but I know it was, she was very, very heavily engaged in this, so I'd just like to recognize that.
Okay. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Now, the BOCC will briefly adjourn, and then will reconvene as the EPC Board. So with that, we're adjourned.
As you've already heard from the BOCC meeting we just had a minute ago on the same topic, this is the South County Production Well, where Tampa Bay Water is asking to forward the application to Southwest Florida Water Management District. The EPC has a contractual right also to file for arbitration for these primary environmental permits, but we do not recommend arbitration in this matter. I have technical staff, Ms. Amram in the audience, and Ms. Lorton is here also. If you have questions, I don't want to repeat what you've already heard from the county staff. But with that, we're available for questions, and no one has signed up for virtual or in-person public comment, but wouldn't hurt to check one more time if someone walked in. But otherwise, available for questions, and then pass it for public comment and a vote.
All right, thank you. There is no public comment. Any questions from commissioners or comments? No? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Oh, I, I didn't even notice that people had left, so I resumed through that. I think that we're ready for a vote, though. Thank you.
Motion carried six to zero.
All right, no further comments. We'll adjourn the special meeting. Thank you.
Welcome back to the Board of County Commissioners' regularly scheduled meeting. Bonnie, would you like to introduce the next item?
Yes, sir. The next item is item F1. This is Chair Hagan, this is your item regarding the, considering pursuing a baseball, softball tournament facility and indoor athletic complex.
All right, thank you.
And we also have, excuse me, Rob Higgins from the Tampa Bay Sports Commission in the audience.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know we're running late, and this shouldn't take too long. The purpose of this item is for the Board to have a brief discussion regarding the potential to build two athletic facilities in Hillsborough County. While this is about improving the quality of life and facility needs for various sports such as baseball, softball, basketball, volleyball, and cheerleading, the reality is, this involves a much broader issue, which is sports tourism. I can speak from personal experience with my daughter's travel softball team, that the economic impact of tournament facilities and sports tourism is significant. These facilities are a revenue generator through their visitor spending, room nights, and hotel taxes that are collected. I first started championing the benefits of tournament facilities at least a decade ago. In 2012, I gave the Board a formal presentation, I believe it was from the, from the dais, entitled "Hillsborough County and Sports Tourism: Creating Jobs and Improving Our Quality of Life." Facts and figures were provided on the impact of these facilities and how Hillsborough County is well-positioned to expand our market share. I outlined three different facility types. Multi-sports, outdoor complex that could host soccer, football, lacrosse, rugby, as well as other sports. An indoor gym recreational center for basketball, volleyball, cheerleading, likely in the West Shore area at the time because it helped to meet the, the business district's needs. And then there was, the third was a 22-field baseball, softball complex that could host major tournaments. Now selfishly, as a former college athlete and coach, I wanted to pursue the baseball, softball complex. However, in consultation with Rob Higgins and the Sports Commission, he stressed that our biggest need was for the multi-sports complex, so our efforts were focused in that direction. One of the first steps that we did was to have an economic or viability study on this type of facility performed. It provided significant information, including the projected costs and economic impacts. And it really confirmed what, what Rob and his team and what we inherently knew to be the case, that this type of facility would be extremely successful in Hillsborough County. To say that the tournament sportsplex has been successful would be an understatement. It has shattered all of the projections. In 2022, 47 events took place, nine of which had international participants and attendees, which resulted in over 68,000 room nights. I think Rob and his teams would tell you that this facility is the talk of the industry. Regarding the other two facilities, I want to point out, there's no question that through the years, other counties and other jurisdictions have built similar-type facilities around. So there is competition. However, Hillsborough County has several attributes that really minimizes or mitigates the competition concerns, including the proximity to our airport, hotel options at every price point, all of the different restaurant and area attractions like Busch Gardens and Aquarium, Zoo Tampa. Our big game experience, as far as hosting major events, or everything from Super Bowl to this week tomorrow, we have the NCAA Frozen Four, Women's Final Fours, all the SEC tournaments, down to amateur events and, and high school events. So the relationships that have been built through the years with the NCAA and various high school and amateur associations well positions us. And then finally, our extremely experienced marketing and facility management organizations to operate the venues, which I'm talking about the Sports Commission, which markets, and then the Sports Authority, which operates the venues. So I think based on all these, you know, Rob would tell you that Hillsborough County is still well-positioned to expand our industry market share. Back in 2012, there was significant interest from the Hotel Motel Association and business leaders in West Shore to build an indoor facility in that business, business district. Over a couple of years, we looked at multiple locations. The TSA and Sports Commission performed an economic or viability study. Unfortunately, the location could not be identified, and the concept never went any further. Well, over the last several months, these same folks have again shown an interest in resurrecting this type of facility in the West Shore area. So in, so for the purposes of today, I don't think that any action is needed with respect to, again, do an additional due diligence on an indoor facility. However, regarding baseball, softball, I feel we can begin to take a deeper look and do some additional due diligence, fully recognizing that both this complex, as well as an indoor facility, are very much conceptual in nature right now and would take many years for one of these to materialize. For example, it took over six years, probably a dozen BOCC votes, before Commissioner Kemp and I cut the ribbon on the tournament complex back in October of 2018. So in closing, I've primarily touched on the benefits of, of sports tourism and the impacts that tournament facilities can have. I want to make one additional point, and that is, in nearly every sport here in Hillsborough County, our local leagues and teams are busting at the seams. We simply do not have enough fields for our players to compete, so having these type of facilities will not only have a significant economic impact, but it will also, it can relieve much of the stress on our current leagues and existing facilities by allowing more games to be played at different locations. I'm open for any Board comments and input, but for today, I'm going to pass the gavel, and the motion is simply for us to authorize, this is again similar to what we did with the previous two facilities, is to authorize an economic or viability study for baseball, softball complex, not to exceed $50,000, and for staff to start to look at potential locations for, for such a facility. So that's the motion for today, and again, recognizing this is very, very much a long-term play. And, but I think getting additional information will help us make a more informed decision and, and go from there.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Cohen. We have comments, I'm sorry, Cohen, comments from Commissioner Owen.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and I, I think understanding the economic impact of, of this will be very important. You know, baseball's changed a lot. I'm the best baseball player on this board now, Commissioner. You know, baseball has changed a lot since I was a kid. We, we used to just have little leagues and, and the travel ball was going from South Brandon Little League over to Bloomingdale High School. That was travel for us. Now, it is such a big business. It is, you, you have parents that travel, I don't know how they do it. They travel from here to Alabama to all, all over the state playing baseball, which, which, which is Hillsborough County's game and always will be. So I'll be very interested to see the economic impact. This, this could be something I think that is a big deal for Hillsborough County. I know a lot of folks from my district. I think we have more baseball fields and soccer fields and football fields in my district, but we're busting at the seams. We have, we have leagues that are sharing space right now as it is. So I'll be very interested to, to see the economic impact, and I'll be supporting it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. As the actual best baseball player on this commission, I, I do want to point out, so this is for administrator-wise, we had a conversation during our first high-level budget review, and I dug and dug, and I asked, how much money out of the general funds do we actually have committed to roads? And that number is basically $0.00.
I don't think that's the right number, and I'm going to look at Tom Fessler in the audience to give us the correct number, but.
It's almost nothing.
I'm certain it's, it's not zero.
So I just want to make sure that this motion was that we will not spend more than $50,000 to simply review the potential economic gain, right?
Right. As I understand, the motion is to perform an economic study similar to what we did for the tournament sportsplex, and that will provide us with information that will help us for better decision-making.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen.
Well, I know who isn't the best baseball player on the dais. I, I want to just briefly say I am going to support the motion. I think it's a great idea, but I wanted to tack, just tack on to what Commissioner Owen said about the fact that we really are busting at the seams with all of our youth programs. And so what you said about the fields being able to be available to our own citizens, I think is a real added benefit to looking at something like this.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan.
No, I just want to say excellent, excellent comments from Board members. I appreciate the, the input and discussion. Regarding Commissioner Owen's comment, I learned a long time ago on this board never to take the bait, so I'm not going to do so right now. But I will point out that I guess I'm so, travel ball didn't exist when I played. So I'm just going to point that out. But I do, the, the comments are, are well-taken, and I appreciate the input. And again, this is the first step of, I, I think we had a dozen votes on the tournament complex, so this by no means locks us in or guarantees anything's going to happen. The reality is, for a baseball facility or a baseball softball, it requires a lot of land, and it's going to be a challenge. So we're probably a little bit better positioned on the, on the indoor, to be, to be candid, because of the, you don't need as much acreage. We have county-owned land that could, could potentially, you know, be a location, so. But I think we need to get the additional information, and then we can make a more informed decision. But I do appreciate all the, all the Board comments.
And I'd just like to add also, thank you for keeping this in the Harper and bringing it back to this Board.
Oh, and one last thing. I want to point out, in all likelihood, if either of these facilities materialize, it won't, it will not be in, in my district. I just want to point that out. When I started this conversation, again, back in 2011, 12, I was a countywide commissioner at the time. But right now, when you look at the, most of the potential locations, it'll be in one, one, three, or four. So, thank you.
With that being said, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, next item.
The next item is item E1. This is also timed certain 10:30. This is to receive a presentation by Dennis Carlton, the Chair of the Agricultural Economic Development Council, to present strategic priorities.
Good morning, Mr. Carlton. Great to see you.
Chairman Hagan, fellow Board members, I want to take the opportunity to thank you to hear from the AEDC. I'm Dennis Carlton. I chair that committee. And then we're going to give a high view of the agricultural impact here in Hillsborough County. We're going to talk a little bit about the challenges, the AEDC priorities, and the transitions. And I'm going to be very brief here because I want to have plenty of time at the end of this in order to be able to talk about an issue that is very important to us, and that has to do with farmworker housing. The Agricultural Economic Development Council was created by the BOCC in 1998 to initiate and assist in effect to create a business atmosphere that is conducive into the continuation and expansion of agriculture in Hillsborough County for the benefit of all the residences. The council serves the BOCC to review and evaluate county agricultural issues and to initiate projects and recommendations. Agriculture has historically been one of the largest industries in the county, and despite the perception that county, that, that the county is urban, agriculture continues to have a significant impact on the local economy. Hillsborough County has an exceptional national reputation for such, for some of the local crops produced, such as plant-sourced strawberries, tomatoes, vegetables, in addition to being the center of the U.S. tropical fish industry. Diversity is one of the keys to the success of Hillsborough farming. In addition to several major commodities, a variety of specialty crops contribute to the sale of $865 million of product at the farm level. Statistically, Hillsborough County ranks as the third-largest producer behind Palm Beach and Dade County and is in the top 4% of the counties in the country. Local agriculture generates additional local impact, economic impact by supporting relevant, related businesses such as farming, real estate, transportation, packaging equipment, seed, agricultural supplies, and services. According to the 2023 University of Florida report, the economic contribution of agriculture production inputs and service in Hillsborough County is over $2 billion. This shows the importance of this to our county and communities. County estimates demonstrate that the amount of farmland is decreasing. The value of crops produced has increased. For instance, since 2003, the amount of farmland has decreased 45%, while the value has increased Farms growing higher-valued crops have been able, have been better able to compete versus alternative land uses. The challenges of agriculture, I'm going to list seven or eight, and most of these, there's nothing y'all can do about. Trade issues in Mexico, access to capital, shrinking labor force, regulation costs, input costs, fertilizers up over 100%, just so you know, competitive, competition for land and water, pesting diseases, and natural disaster. Access to capital is kind of, is an interesting subject. As long as a business is profitable and has a strong balance sheet, access to capital comes pretty easy. If either one of those gets upside down, you're in trouble. I will share with you that the backbone of the balance sheet in agriculture is the land. If anything is done that negatively impacts the value of that land, it negatively impacts this $2 billion business. I just wanted to share that with you. You know, profitability, and I keep saying profitability because that's the most important thing in any business. A profitable agriculture industry is the most important factor in maintaining agriculture as part of Hillsborough County. Now, I'm going to talk about the AEDC, the priorities, and this is to encourage the BOC to utilize the AEDC to review and provide recommendations on issues and decisions that could impact agriculture. Ensure that farmworker housing can be developed efficiently while not being evaluated with urban housing criteria. We currently have a significant shortage of farmworker housing. According to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation report, we are short 2,047 workers. The reality is, it's much more than that because the businesses continue to expand. County permitting should recognize farmworker housing as a less-than-permanent agriculture use and not be reviewed as an urban residential development. Some of the areas to be addressed include county road width, internal and external sidewalks, parking requirements, county occupation limitations per unit. Two or three other little things, and then we'll, I'll turn it back to you. Identify and address issues related to duplication of regulation for agricultural activities per Florida statute 823146. Many farming activities are regulated by state agencies, and the county is preempted by. by the state from regulating these activities. Encourage ELAP to utilize conservation easements and other options that allow the continued agricultural use of preserved land. I will share with you that there are probably a number of families in Hillsborough County that have owned land for generations that you would like to have preserved, but you haven't been able to do it. Those families aren't going to sell that land, but they might very well put an easement on it. And if you did that, you have preserved it as you want to. And the added benefit of that, and this is something that we all need to look at, you don't have to carry the cost of maintaining it. And over the lifetime of a piece of land, that is very, very important. So I would share that with you. Last thing is support the University of Florida Institute of Food and Agriculture Service, which is IFIS. Support the Development Center for Applied Artificial Intelligence and Agriculture there at the Gulf Coast Research Center. And at this time, I would open it up for y'all to ask me anything you want to. I will share with you that I have, Simon's here somewhere, and so, okay, Stevens back here. I took the liberty, I've asked Chris McNeil, who's an engineer, to come that has done some work for me in the past, that if it gets too technical for me, if the commissioner, if the chairman wouldn't care, I'd let Chris speak if need be. Okay. Anybody have any questions about anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, first of all, for your comments. Commissioner, several commissioners want to speak. Commissioner Owen, it's first.
Well, first, thank you for being here today. I'm the one that requested this report. This guy standing here is one of the best men I know. He's a pretty, he's a humble guy, but you, you're somebody that is so invested in our community. Congratulations on a strawberry festival, right? Most successful one we've had, over 600,000 people. So I am a little disappointed to see you without a cowboy hat on, seeing you in a suit without, yeah, okay, you got boots, good. And to your comment, the only thing I would disagree with you on, on what you said, that things we can't control, that we can't help improve with trade fertilizer, but by helping improve what we can control, it will allow you to focus on those other issues as well. So thank you for being here today, specifically on the farmworker housing, because it's a real interesting issue and one that I'm going to tackle after this meeting and after receiving this report. Can I just get a general understanding again? I know you mentioned that obviously we may be looking at it when it comes to zoning with an urban criteria. Can you just really, again, just briefly, let us know the challenges that you all face with farmworker housing just in general?
Yes, and I'll give you something specific. The reality of it is, I think, first of all, we need to look at farmworker housing. We talk about a $2 billion industry, and the choke point in the industry is labor. And the only labor we're going to have is H2A labor, and it's mandated that you have to provide housing. So I'm delighted that everybody understands the importance of that, because without labor, we're out of business. The process of going through is very time-consuming. And one of the things, and here, again, you know, I'm no engineer, but I had talked to Chris about this, because he's been working on number one, and he shared with me, allow the conditional use process that is required by the Land Development Code for farmworker housing to be reviewed as part of the site review process, just like a conditional use would be. If they were completed simultaneously and part of the site review process and not as a separate process, which is required now, to be completed prior to the site plan review. And this adds months to the process. So in other words, let them go in tandem. When we talk about the urban buy side of the things, we've got, you know, we're talking about having, putting internal and external sidewalks in, parking, you know, parking requirements, the people there don't have a car. I mean, there's nothing to park. You have to, the farm, the growers, you know, have to supply transportation for wherever they're going. So we just need to look at some common sense things. What I would like to see happen is send this to the development service, have them get with the ag community. Let's sit down and see what makes sense and try to streamline this thing. We don't want to do anything that's wrong, but we just need to be able to get to point A, from A to B in a straight line in a timely manner without wasting a bunch of money or doing something that makes no sense.
Yeah.
Now, that's a little bit cracker talking, I think, you know, kind of at a high level, but that's where we're at.
Yeah, and I think you alluded to it. So there'll be, there are two separate processes, and usually they take within a gap within two months or longer, you're saying?
No.
No? Okay.
How long will the process take?
Sure, sure. And I know, I want to hear that, though. So six months, but I meant in between the two, the site plan to have that process, you'd have to have two separate meetings, basically, right? Or go ahead and comment on that, because I want to know that process.
Yes, sir, Commissioner, Chris McNeil. Part of the process is that we, the way it's set up now is we go through a separate conditional use process preceding site development, submittal and review, and that's required to be completed prior to.
Okay.
Other conditional use cases, almost every other conditional use is done simultaneously as part of the development review, site permanent process.
Sure.
And in this particular use, it's separated out. So it adds that two to three months ahead of time.
Wow, okay.
Plus the site.
Yeah, well, that's eye-opening. Yeah, thank you, thank you for bringing that to my attention. And again, thank you for being here. Thank you for all you do. I think some other commissioners have some questions, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Wostol. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Mr. Carlton. I was actually looking around the audience for your son. I didn't realize we were getting senior today, all the better. I actually
He's riding a horse today, and I'm here, so who won?
I understand. I actually received this report. You hosted me down at your actual AEDC meeting. Was that in December? I believe it was in December, maybe January. And I actually have this report on my desk. I've slowly thumbed through it and looked at what, and considered what could or couldn't be done. I believe that you absolutely must have exclusions in our land use and comprehensive plans. I think that's an absolute necessity because the fact of the matter is, is that you're being regulated to death by every single level of government, and that's been going on for at least since about the 90s, around Clinton timeframe, if that's correct. And, you know, one thing that we hear in Hillsborough is overdevelopment. And I believe that that's the incorrect term. I think it was just a failure to keep up with development and infrastructure. And the real, the real fact of the matter is, is that the folks on the east and south side of the county want to see less development. The best way to get that done is by making it profitable for farmers to stay in Hillsborough County. Because if you don't have the need to sell your land, then there's not going to be any land for them to develop on. And while I am Commissioner Owen's better at baseball, I am his lesser at land use. So I probably will take a backseat to what I've been considering to see what he has to offer to improve the viability of you and your community to stay healthy financially in Hillsborough County to help us address some of these major issues. And there is a Tampa Bay Times article that I saw come out during the COVID times where it was actually a direct attack on farmworker housing that was completely arbitrary to the nature of everything that's going on, particularly since all of the work that you do is outside in the open air. And I do believe that we need to offer your community more protections, and I look forward to fighting aggressively for you to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. I was interested and have been on the agricultural easements. I'm just wondering if you have, I know, I don't even know that, I don't even know that we've done any or how much we've done in terms of Hillsborough County. But do you have any, and I've looked for information other places before, but do you have any information on any areas, particularly counties of Florida, but even anywhere, where they have pursued this at all on a county level and where those are, any information about those?
Yes, the Water Management District has done lots of them. The state has got, I don't know how many million dollars, where they're going to pursue in conservation easements statewide. The federal government has done it, other counties do it. It's what
I'll just say, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with conservation easements. I was wondering about agricultural easements.
When you talk about agricultural easement, what are you talking?
Like forever use as agricultural. I guess it would be just a conservation easement, not to ever have it developed. If it was, for instance, a farm that was owned now, and I, so I guess it would just be a general conservation easement.
Yes. The, you know, in real estate, you have a bundle of rights. So when you do it, every easement's different or can be different. So it would depend on how the easement was written. I think if your question is dealing with development, typically the easements will preclude any development, or maybe one house per X, whatever that is. But, and when you do that, you know, typically it'll stay in agriculture.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Carlton, for being here. I've enjoyed working with you and Simon. And so I'm going to suggest, as it relates to farmworker housing, that you meet again with Adam Gormley, the Director of Development Services, to see how we can help with farmworker housing, because he has changed some of the regulations
Right.
to help you. And with a $2 billion economic impact to our county, we definitely don't want to lose, you know, our farmers.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Carlton, for your presentation. I know you're aware of this, but this board is very much supportive of you and your agency and the industry.
Yes, sir.
Anything we can do to help and be of assistance, please know that we're here for you.
You've done that today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any action that we need to take today?
No, sir. And Adam is coming down, too, so we'll follow up as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next item.
The next item is a regular agenda item. This is item B2. This is to approve a resolution allocating up to $550,000 for the Brandon Sports and Aquatic Center to improve capital improvements to existing pools. Mr. Burkey will go through this item.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Item B2 is asking you to approve a resolution and related funding agreement in the amount of $550,000 funding to Brandon Sports and Aquatic Center doing business as High Five Inc. This item will provide the funding for the renovation of the infant toddler teaching pool and an existing 50-meter competition pool. The teaching pool will enable High Five to have the capacity for an infant swimming program and for children three and under. Thank you.
Commissioner Owen.
Yes, thank you for being here today. You know, I actually learned to swim in this pool when I was three years old. So this used to be called Brandon Swim and Tennis Club. It's now called High Five. And I inspected this pool myself personally, and it's, it's been an eyesore for a long time. It's just empty. As many, you know, High Five is one of those organizations, one of the largest after-school programs. And something, what I like about this, I know we're about to get into some hairy subjects here with flag items, but, and I know this is not one of them, but I think this is a great blueprint for showing staff and everybody on how we should allocate these funds for specific use, showing us going for a pool that will allow our staff to create contracts and put it in front of us in this way. The mission of this organization is something I pride myself in, because we have such an epidemic with kids in our communities, and this is for all of Hillsborough County, that can't swim, that don't learn to swim. And this particular pool, I know, is going to be dedicated particularly to that purpose. Like I said, I learned to swim in this exact pool. My parents were getting a pool, so they had to torture me first at this pool. And it's just, it's a special place, and I'm going to support it. But I really wanted to highlight the fact that how this, this was particularly done, where we have an actual contract in the backups. We show specifically how these funds are going to be used. So I'm going to move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion approved by Commissioner Owen. Second, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Wostol.
Thank you, Chair. Same thing to the general public. These dollars, Mr. Burkey, are general fund dollars that could have been used for critical infrastructure roads, correct?
They are from unincorporated general fund dollars.
Okay. And I just want to make that clear and transparent to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Before I go, I just want to say I wholeheartedly support this item. Several years ago, this was something that actually Bob and Kerry Rodriguez brought to my attention about the, they had a family friend that ended up drowning, and then it brought to my attention, I think it was Memorial Day weekend, and how the number of deaths that occurred in the Tampa Bay area. And so as a result of that, I kind of championed the calls and created our drowning prevention, our swimming lessons program. And this is one of the areas where it's utilized. And so this is near and dear to my heart. I'm more than happy to support and very thrilled that we're doing this. So no other comment. Commissioner Kemp.
And I concur. I'm just, it, I don't think any child, growing up in Hillsborough County, should not know how to swim. I mean, it's just a, it's, it's a huge danger here, but you're exposed to the water all the time. And it just, I'm just amazed that we, I know that there's probably insurance issues with part of this and other reasons why there, there isn't more availability, actually, because it is just, to me, very critical that we have every, every child and every adult that's here with water all around you, that you learn how to swim. Is the Brandon Sports and Aquatic Center not-for-profit?
It is.
Yeah. And, and so, and it has public availability for everyone to use it in some capacity or regardless of income?
I don't know of any restrictions.
Okay. Thank you.
And one last thing that I would point out is that whenever I started working on this program, it was explained to me that years ago, the gold standard of park directors was Ed Raddus here in the county. And it was explained to me back then that, simply put, that we didn't want to be, because of the insurance and liability concerns, the county never wanted to be in the pool business. And so as a result of that, it made more sense to partner with, you know, Brandon Sports and Aquatics, with YMCA's and organizations like that. Big reason is because of what Commissioner Kemp said, the liability and insurance reasons. But I'll also point out, the first two areas, based on Commissioner Kemp's questions, that we focused on was early Head Start and Head Start programs. Those were the first kids that had access and got to utilize the county's program. So I want to put that on the record. No other questions, comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Myers' item. This is item F2. This is relating to the Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity grand chapter meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to talk about the economic impact of hosting the 86th Grand Chapter Meeting of Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity here in Hillsborough County. We're talking about a $10 million economic impact to our county. During the week of July 18th through the 23rd, there would be 9,500 men here and their families. Just think about it, 9,500 men, but not to say if you're looking for a husband, but you, just joking. But anyway, and their family's going to be here to enjoy a wonderful week of doing community service, education and learning while they're here visiting Tampa. Also, I found out this past Friday, they have a waiting list of over 175 men trying to get here to Tampa in July. Kappa Alpha Psi is a part of the Divine Nine, that we are nationally and internationally a Greek organization. And so I am more than happy to move this item, F2, this morning for $100,000 that I put in my flag item to support Kappa Alpha Psi coming here to Tampa, because our ROI is a great and very significant to our county. So that is my motion.
Okay, we got a motion approved by Commissioner Myers. Second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wostol. Commissioner Wostol?
Same thing to the taxpayers of Hillsborough County. This is general fund dollars, correct? So all of my same message before, and that brings today's total to $2.1 million of general fund dollars that could have been gone to roads, critical infrastructure and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank Commissioner Myers for all her hard work in making this event happen. Visit Tampa Bay, which recruits many of these events, that conferences that take place here, will tell you that it's more and more common, and you can call it sponsorships, you can call it incentives, whatever you want to call it, but these are needed in order to bring in these major events. To not do so places our community at a competitive disadvantage. And as Commissioner Myers said, the funding was previously approved and it's already in our budget. And again, just want to thank her for her work in making this happen. No other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next two items are Commissioner Owen's items. The first one is item F3.
The first one is Item F3 regarding the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will request the board to approve the ELAP Subcommittee selection for the 2023 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. This award was started by my predecessor, so I've kind of inherited it here, but I'm proud to inherit it, and especially for a gentleman like Mr. Heath, Robert Heath, who won the award. I put in the backups, Commissioners, a little bit late, all the resume and all of his accomplishments. I am not going to sit here all day and go through them. But just note, our Subcommittee here labored over this, and it was a very easy decision to them. Just real quick, he was a seasonal warden, Tampa Bay Spoonbill Technician, National Audubon Society, coordinated countless tracking projects for Tampa Bay, environmental consulting, and serving as a volunteer and president, Wildlife Fellowship, Inc., Senior Ecologist, Director of Land Management, Environmental Supervisor, Hillsborough County, Environmental Scientist, Hillsborough County, Park Ranger, Florida Park Service. The list goes on and on and on. So I don't want to labor over it too long, but I am going to, I'm going to move for approval of Rob Heath to be awarded the 2023 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award, consistent with the ELAP Subcommittee selection process, and for the award presentation to take place at the April 19th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Okay, we get a motion by Commissioner Owen. Second, Commissioner Wohlstall. If no comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
F4?
F4. It is also Commissioner Owen's item regarding a letter of support for Moffett Cancer Center.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is really, really exciting news, I know, for everybody on this board. I had the pleasure last week of going to Sun City Center and meeting the folks at Moffett that are going to be heading up our new South County Moffett Cancer Research Center. This is going to be so, this is such tremendous attribute to the community that I can hardly put into words. When I attended this conference, I wasn't, I was expecting a bunch of boring doctors. It was like being at a sporting event. And they really take it to the next level, that they enjoy their jobs. But the people from Sun City Center, as you folks know, it's hard to get out to Tampa, to where Moffett is. I know a lot of people here on this dais has been affected, and my grandmother, I remember having to take her all the way out there. This is going to provide such an amazing resource for the people of South and East County, and even Manatee County, to come up and not have to drive all the way up to Tampa. So what I would like, and what I'm moving for, is to direct staff to draft a letter of support for the chair's signature for Moffett Cancer Center's congressional funding requests for road improvements in Ruskin. This letter will be addressed to Congressman Vern Buchanan's office, and also provide general support for the new oncology center in Ruskin, Florida.
Okay, we get a motion. Commissioner Owen, go for second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda and Wohlstall. And it sounds like an exciting, exciting project. No other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, next item?
Thank you. The next item is Item G1. This is to receive a staff report regarding nonprofit organizations funded by the general fund. This was requested by staff, and Mr. Fessler will present this item.
Morning, Tom.
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. Yes, back on January 19th, at a board meeting, Commissioner Wohlstall requested a report on nonprofit funding and how it has impacted the county over the years, and also requested some options to consider. This report was also requested to be primarily focused on the general fund dollars provided to nonprofits. I will cover the other sources, but primarily it is targeted towards general fund dollars. The first slide I'd like to go over today is related to funding for nonprofits through the county and how those, the funding awards come about to nonprofits. There are several different paths that that can take. The first one might be a county commissioner funding request. Generally, those would come through the annual budget process. So as we go through the budget process, typically like this year, there would be opportunities at various points in time where Commissioners could indicate there might be a nonprofit that they would like to fund. And then the full board would vote on that, those flagged items. A second way might be through a county program. These programs are, have been in the past, championed by various Commissioners. Those are things such as the Historic Challenge Grant Program, Capital Asset Preservation Program, and several other programs within the county. Those typically are programs where there's an application process and competitive awards. Another way might be through pass-through grants that we receive from both federal and, the federal and state grant sources. Some examples of those might be through our CSBG, CDBG, SHIP Program from the State of Florida, Head Start Grant, and then recently, and more recently, some COVID grants that we've received. So we've had various ways that we've passed those dollars through to nonprofit organizations to help for service delivery within our area. There are also some nonprofits that are funded through tourist development tax purposes or processes. So as you know, there's a bed tax that's collected in the county, and there are various nonprofits that sometime assist with that restricted funding source to deliver some services that are designed for the tourist development taxes. And then we have our department budgets. So we have various departments within the county that also, we've got some funding that's embedded within their, within their departments. So if there's a core service that we need some assistance from a nonprofit to provide the service, sometimes it can be more efficient to contract out to nonprofits versus creating or having staff provide those services ourself. And then finally, we do, based on space availability, provide space to various nonprofits. I think at the current point in time, it's about 47 different nonprofits occupy some form of county space, and we have leases with them, where they actually would provide their services using county facilities. Again, this slide is somewhat related to the first slide. It just identifies the various funding sources that might be used to fund nonprofits. The first source there would be general funds. Most of those funds would be through the countywide general fund, probably in some, somewhere in excess of 95% of nonprofits that we fund through general funds are funded with countywide funds. Again, I'll mention the tourist development taxes, state and federal grants. We have some special revenue funds. So there might be some state statutes, or there might be some local ordinances, where there's some funds that are restrictive for specific purposes. In some cases, in a lot of cases, those are related to the court system, and we'll have some nonprofits assist us with providing some services related to the court system. And then finally, another source might be through our indigent healthcare, SRTAX. There might be some nonprofits that we use to assist us with that program. As far as the types of services that are provided for us by nonprofits, you can see there's a list here. I thought what I'd do is just quickly run through maybe some of the different nonprofits, give examples of the ones that assist us with some of these services. As far as job training, we have the CDC of Tampa, Dress for Success, and certain other organizations. As far as museums go, we've got, of course, Mozy, the Glazer Children's Museum, the Tampa History Center, Sulfur Springs Museum, and there would be some additional there also. As far as arts and culture, there might be the Straz, Tampa Museum of Art, the Arts Council, which just recently, as you know, we have wrapped kind of up underneath the county department. Used to be separate, but now it's one of our county departments. As far as special events, that could be like the MLK Parade or the Caribbean Festival. As far as healthcare and social services, that could be various contracts that we have to provide homeless services through our homeless services department for providing shelter and food. Tourism would be Sports Commission, some economic development type activities. Examples there would be, we do fund various chambers, chambers of commerce throughout the area, and the EDC. And then as far as youth services, there's a whole host of nonprofits to provide youth services for us, such as the Boys and Girls Clubs, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Center Place is a new one to us, AMI Kids, and so forth. This next slide is just, I wanted to get, kind of show a picture of kind of the trends in our nonprofit funding over the years. And so this is a slide that's geared towards what I would call our nonprofit area of the budget, where we budget a lot of different nonprofits. Right now, you can see it's just under 100 nonprofits. I wanted to look at this over, you know, over the course of the, of years. And as you can see here, this is recurring funding that's in the budget every year. And so from, for the period from fiscal year '07 through fiscal year '14, it was generally pretty flat, and the number of organizations maintained itself at around 40, 47 different nonprofits. And then from fiscal year '14 through fiscal year '23, there has been, there has been growth in the number of nonprofits that we fund. That's gone up about $9.9 million on a recurring basis over that period of time, and we've gone from 47 nonprofits to about 98. The next slide here, the last slide was recurring funding. This next slide is, represents one-time funding that has been provided to nonprofits over the years. You can see, I put it on the same scale as the recurring, just to kind of keep things in perspective. You can see it's a lot less as far as the one-time funding. There have been some commitments in the last couple of years to a couple of different There are some other areas within the county budget where there are some nonprofits that show up. The first one would be in the nondepartmental allotments area. This is an area of the budget where if we don't, if we have a type of service that we fund, or something that we fund that doesn't fit nice and neatly within a department, we might budget for it, nondepartmental allotments. Those could be things such as, like outside legal fees, mailing costs for trim notices, property insurance, audit services, things like that. There are a few nonprofits that have ended up in this area of the budget. To be honest with you, I'd probably recommend that we move some of these over into the nonprofit area, because I think, I think they probably belong over there in order for, to gain some additional transparency. But you can see, that's about $3 million. And then we do have some nonprofits, again, that are embedded within our department's budgets, and those are the nonprofits that are helping us provide some of those more core services that our departments deliver. So the biggest one there, as you can see, on a recurring basis, within our department budgets, it's close to $10 million. The largest one being in our, in our homeless services area, we have several contracts, like with Metropolitan Ministries, and, yeah, there are some other organizations. Feeding Tampa Bay, I believe, is in there also, so they provide some sheltering services and food, and food services. Arts and culture, again, we brought the Arts Council up underneath the Economic Development Department, so that's what that one is. As far as economic development goes, some organizations that we fund would be like The Wave, the Tampa Bay Black Business Investment Corporation, Prospera, et cetera. As far as community engagement, we've got organizations like the University Area CDC, the Carrollwood Cultural Center that we support, Child Care would might be, is the Early Learning Coalition. As far as mental health type services, this morning, an award was given to the executive, the CEO of the Crisis Center. So the Crisis Center does assist us also. Those are services, if they were not providing those, we would have to provide them as the county. They provide us with Baker Act transports, along with various other services. And then finally, another one there might be ACTS, which is, provides us with a jail diversion project. In our capital improvement program over the years, this slide provides a snapshot of some active projects that we have in our CIP. They haven't been completed yet. You can see what some of those are. Also included in the backup to the staff report itself, I list out over the last 10 years, a more complete list of projects that we have funded for various nonprofits. I wanted to point out on this slide, we've got $3.6 million in historic preservation. That's kind of a cumulative amount. So on an annual basis, we do provide about $1 million in recurring funding for that program. But those projects, a lot of times, take more than a year to complete. So we work with our nonprofits on those, and so that's why when you see $3.6 million, that's an accumulation of awards over multiple years. As far, I mentioned that we have nonprofits that are, that are in county space. We have a board policy related to that. The board policy has a set of criteria on when a nonprofit may be available, may be, can go into some county space. It's based on space availability. We do have some favorable lease rates with these nonprofits. As you can see, out of the 47 nonprofits currently, I believe about, there are about 18 of them that, we have a lease with them, but it's a $0 lease or a $1 lease per year. And we are starting to adjust, as those leases are coming up for renewal, we are starting to adjust some of those leases to recover some more of the actual cost that the county is incurring for that space. One other thing I thought I, that was important to put in here is, back in September of 2019, the board did approve the new local ordinance for the Hillsborough County Local Affordable Housing, Housing Fund Program, which created the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, providing production of affordable housing for very low, low, and moderate income families, funded with countywide general funds. It requires that the county administrator include in her recommended budget every year $10 million of new recurring dollars. The board can make changes to that after the recommended budget's delivered. And those are competitively bid out to, and it might, those funds go to both nonprofit and for-profit entities. As far as nonprofit administration, you can see that we work closely, county administrator's office does, with the county attorney's office to bring agreements for each of the nonprofits back to the board each year. We have over 100 of those agreements. We do have to process monthly reimbursements for most of those nonprofits, and we do have monitoring activities. So we do go out and we do do some monitoring activities with the nonprofits that we, that we contract with. Just wanted to quickly give you a 10-year impact. If we went back and looked at general fund dollars committed to nonprofits over the last 10 years, you can see that it's approximately in the ballpark of about $225 million. I've got a footnote on this slide that shows, in the fiscal year '23 budget, we have about $34 million of recurring dollars committed to nonprofit organizations, exclusive of a few programs that would add maybe a couple more million dollars a year to that figure. As far as options, some of the options that we came up with for the board to consider as it relates to nonprofits is that, you know, number one, might be to require written proposals before the board votes on any new nonprofit funding. If the board wanted to do something a little more drastic, they could look at converting our funding for nonprofits to more as like seed funding, or one-time funding versus recurring funding. Seed funding being for maybe a couple of years for, to get a nonprofit going on a given initiative. There could be annual funding limits. Back in 2012, the board CAC met for over a year and came back with a set of recommendations. Those could be brought back up and considered. The board could consider an option of, no new funding included in the, in the recommended budget. So that would be the county administrator's budget that comes back to the board. One thing to consider may be that, if you want to improve transparency there, that there are no, there's no new funding that's embedded in that recommended budget, that any new funding be just considered at the board level through the budget process. You could limit the size of awards to nonprofits based on the size of their budget. You could have disclosure of other funding sources that each of the nonprofits is receiving as you're considering making awards to them. You could consolidate, you can consolidate budgets to one area where, of the nonprofits to one area of the budget, so where appropriate. So we might be able to have more of the nonprofits, like I mentioned in the nondepartmental allotments area, bringing some of those over to the nonprofit area. And then finally, you could, you know, we could, you know, embark on an initiative to try to make sure that, we do the best we can to get outcome, meaningful outcome measures out of our nonprofits, but there could be some room for improvement in that area. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation, Tom. I know you put a lot of work into getting all the information and putting it together. Commissioner Wohlstall?
Thank you, Chair. Could we look back up that slide that you had?
The total impact statement? And we can just leave that slide up. One thing that you left out, you're too humble, Mr. Fessler, is that you were actually the one, I didn't know this existed, but you actually did this report in 2012, where you, you tried to get ahead of this challenge and make it more equitable for the community. So that was an interesting discovery, and I do want to say thank you to you. You were painfully honest to me throughout you bringing back the fact finding of this report, more so than I think a lot of people could have been, and that, that helped me a lot on getting through it. So I'll commend you through that. I do want to say a couple of things on the, the one slide that we brought up of the graph of the increases. You'll see that realistically, it was right about just the previous four years, starting in fiscal year '18, there was a significant change, which ended up resulting in almost a doubling of the nonprofits that we funded, and a tripling in the amount of annual expenses that went into funding these. And it really highlights the need to take advantage of some of these really excellent options that you've pointed out. options that you've pointed out. One thing that I will note in this report that you provided, that we worked to make sure was not done, is that no nonprofit was highlighted as an issue, one more than the other. This is not about a nonprofit. This is not suggesting that any of these nonprofits are not offering a benefit to this community. And one thing that was said during public comment that I appreciate from the former commissioner is that we would have to add thousands of personnel to county staff, which I, I absolutely disbelieve. And while I appreciate the comments and hope that the former commissioner is enjoying retirement, I don't want the public to think that we would have such an egregious increase to the bottom line of operating county staff if we put a handle on this. It could be done in a fair way that makes sure that the few of these on here that are really adding a true benefit to the community continue to be funded without disruption. One thing that this report doesn't do, if I'm correct, is it doesn't calculate the impact of the usage of county staff time, personnel time, which is typically the largest amount of money on, on the bottom line. Is that correct? It doesn't take into account how much time it would take to track and improve and implement and follow up on. I mean, I actually pulled a needle out of the haystack on one of the nonprofits because there's not really a system in place. There is a little questionnaire. They only stuck out to me because they got a high-six figures amount of money. And in their beneficiary data, it's, it's all zeros, all zeros that they have provided back to the community with the monies that they've received. And I'm sure that there's some type of reasoning behind that. The name of this nonprofit is irrelevant because, again, we don't care and we're not highlighting one over the other. The point is, is that these are all general fund dollars that were supposed to be working for the community and may or may not have been because we have no process in place. The other thing that I don't believe, I, I didn't see in the options, which I understand this is a report and I'm just going to be receiving the report today, is, did it have a requirement option to not fund a nonprofit more than a specific percentage of their total operating budget? Was that in there?
We, we did have an option in there, Commissioner, that identified that we could consider, and we may have put a percentage in there. We could consider any different, number of different percentages. If we take a look at a nonprofit organization's budget, let's say it's, their total budget's, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, there could be a percentage that we say, the county's not willing to fund more than, let's say, twenty percent of that. So that was one of the options that we did include.
Because right now, there's potentially nonprofits that the county is funding ninety to a hundred percent of their entire operating budget. Is that, is that fair?
That's fair. There, there might be a few of those, yes.
Would it also be possible, maybe, Ms. Ferris, you can, would it be possible that in these options, that there can be a requirement that when we're pulling their IRS 990s, their executive compensation packages, which we do not have a requirement for right now for these nonprofits, correct?
We do not.
That, we say that if they have executive staff making X amount of dollars, then potentially we have a clause that says, then possibly, they don't need taxpayer dollars to run their organization.
We certainly could look into that.
Okay. This was excellent work, and it's a lot of information, and there's a lot of good options in there that I would like myself and my colleagues to be able to look at. But for now, I'd like to motion to receive the report.
Okay, we got a motion to receive the report by Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Kemp. Got several commissioners in the queue. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you. And I-
Commissioner Owen, and then Commissioner Kemp.
Okay, I'll go. Well, thank you for this report, this, and thank you, Commissioner Wostel, for your leadership in getting this in. It's, it's pretty eye-opening to me, and I know that once this report percolates a little bit into my district, I am going to get emails and emails and calls saying, why aren't my roads fixed? Will you pull up that slide again, that showed, that breakdown that you just had up? And I just wanted to make sure I'm getting this right. I've never been through the flag process, and I, I hate the name "flag." I, I want to change that to, you know, general fund allocation or something to that effect. But of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five million, how much of that is flag item? Like, is there, is there a way to know that, or have we looked into that?
Commissioner, there's probably not a way to know exactly. I would say it's the majority of it. And this, that's a tenure impact, so, I mean, I started with the county twenty-one years ago, and a lot of these nonprofits were being funded at, at that point. So when they initially became funded, I'd, I'd have a hard time saying.
Okay. And I've never been through the flag process, so forgive me for asking some, some questions that, that most of these commissioners know answers to. Whenever, whenever we're doing this, when we're flagging items at the time of the budget, are we allocating these funds to a particular use within that organization? So, for example, I like that, what we did today, when we were looking at Brandon Swim Tennis, or BSAC, now formerly High Five. Is there a particular, that, that funding request goes for a particular, like a swimming pool, for example? Is that always required, or do, do we just, do we just give the money to the organizations and let them spend it as they deem fit?
We do the best that we can to be as specific as we can on outcome measures and to pay for specific outcomes. I would say there are some nonprofits where we, we, we support their mission, so it's a more general in nature. So I think it goes both ways. So one of the options that we presented was, a couple of the options were to maybe try to target down a little bit more on some outcomes versus just general support for our mission.
Yeah, and I understand we can't do, listen, the Crisis Center, for example. I mean, we know that those funds are going to be used wisely. We know that organization. But for me, as a commissioner, when I'm looking at the hundreds of other organizations that I, even by the name, I don't know what they do, that makes it very, very difficult. So, you know, I, I think we, as a board, need to put something in place. And I can't imagine how hard that is for staff if we, if we flag and send, and send money to a particular organization, and then now you're left with the task of saying, okay, how are you going to spend these funds? To me, that seems like a pretty heavy lift with, with all these dollars. Is that safe to say?
It can be challenging at times, yes. Sometimes there's an expectation that the county's going to cut a check, so to speak, and we have to do that education process, that we don't just cut a check, we have to have something in return.
Sure, sure.
We need to know what, what you're doing and, and have a, a process in place to be able to verify that, you know, that in fact you are delivering your mission.
Yeah. I mean, when I see Crisis Center, when I see homeless initiatives, I mean, that's, a lot of those things could fall onto the county. I do understand that point. But maybe some of those initiatives should. So I, it, it's just a hard answer, answer to, a hard question to answer. So, you know, I, I really think that we need to really take another good look at, at how this is done, how these processes take place. And, you know, when you go get a loan, when you go get a mortgage, say a business loan, or you're working with the SBA or whatnot, you have to provide ongoing tax returns at their whim, whenever they want them. So whenever they want financials, we can request them. I would really urge this board to do that, especially with reoccurring, which I almost think shouldn't exist in a way, that they should be one-time funds and everything brought back to the board. But if there are certain organizations where that's appropriate, it may be. You know, we need to have something in place to where you all can state, hey, we, we want to look at the finances of this organization right now. It doesn't have to be during tax time, it could be at any time, because that's what banks do. That's what banks do when they lend you money, that you're paying interest back to them for. So, so thank you for all your work on this. I, I can't tell you how, how eye-opening this is, but, but listen, I, I understand that, you know, I, I always say that, you know, the businesses are the backbone of your community, the churches are the soul of your community, and the not-for-profits are the heart of your community. I understand that these funds, in, in most cases, get used for the right reason. But, but if we're not requesting financials and we, this is not transparent to the public so that the, the people in my district know exactly what I'm using their tax dollars for, you know, that process has to take place. So thank you all for, for all your hard work on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. And it was, it, it is good to see the list and understand more about the nonprofit process and how it intersects with the county. So I thi, so I think it's a, a good exercise and probably something that we could stand to have some more oversight with specifically. So I think some of the suggestions are also well-taken. I just don't want to, especially, I know, Commissioner Wostel, you had mentioned this morning, you gave several tallies. And I think, when you say it, do you say that general fund? Is that what you say? Commissioner Wostel, I'm asking you. When you have said this morning, this money came out of the general fund, is that the term you use?
Well, countywide general funds can be used for roads and infrastructure, even including the municipalities. And the unincorporated general funds can be used on roads on the unincorporated area of the county. That is one hundred percent irrefutably correct. Thank you.
And I'd like to have our, our staff, is that one hundred? Could you, for instance, use countywide funds on Lithia Pinecrest Road?
It couldn't be used on Lithia Pinecrest, but it could be used on a county road inside one of the municipalities.
Okay.
So I think that's the distinction.
Okay. So I think it's really important for us to understand that, because most of what, could it be used on Van Dyke Road?
I wouldn't think that Van Dyke would qualify either.
Right. So, so these are the things that are facing us all the time, all the Big Bend. Would that be an example where it could be used?
Not Big Bend either.
But unincorporated general could have been used on Lithia Pinecrest.
Unincorporated, yeah.
So I want to make sure that the commissioner isn't sit here and allow to inject words that I did not say. Thank you very much.
That, that's why I was asking for the distinction between the countywide and unincorporated general, because I thought I heard you just say "general." That's what I caught, I believe. But I wasn't certain, that's why I asked. It was an honest question, just to get that distinction, because I don't want to get any lack of transparency to the public or misunderstanding when Commissioner Owen said, oh, my constituents will be calling me tomorrow about where, where these roads. I think it's important for Commissioner Owen to, if he gets asked that question, or for any commissioner here, can, can we use what we allocated this morning to the Brandon Aquatic Center? Could that be used for Big Bend Road instead? Could that be used for Van Dyke Road? Could that be used for Lithia Pinecrest?
In that particular case, it could have been because it was unincorporated area funds that were used there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Because I thought that that was absolutely, absolutely accurate. Okay. Thank you for that distinction. And I think it's important for all of us to know that distinction, because a lot of these do come out of our, our countywide pot, and that is not transferable. Whereas if it's our unincorporated, we are making decisions in that case between the Brandon facility and our unincorporated, and our, our roads. And I think that, you know, this, this is a challenge for us, because our unincorporated funds are so de minimis. We have four-point-three mills compared to what is five-point-seven, or, do I have that, five-point-seven mills for our countywide?
That's the, that's in the ballpark, Commissioner, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And, and we collect that from the entire county, and we dedicate that to our constitutional offices, the great bulk of it, to our courts, our, so public safety, to PAT resources, to social services, types of things, to economic development. It doesn't get, it, that big pot, that's what that is for. The other, which is the unincorporated county funds, of which the Brandon Sports, and, and maybe we should have a specific, I think, workshop or presentation to explain this again, but I don't want to, in the meantime, have, you know, the public out there thinking, oh, well, we funded this or that, and each time that it could have been spent on Lithia Pinecrest or Van Dyke or some other road like that, which are at the top of our agendas as a need. But that doesn't, when we make these decisions, we're, they might, we have in competition, for instance, a Brandon Aquatic Center today with the road needs. And that is unusual, and that's a really challenge when we have such a sparse, we, our unincorporated county budget is a very de minimis budget, four-point-three mills. City of Tampa, Plant City and Temple Terrace have over six mills for their services within their cities. We are very, very, at a great deficit for what we are spending. So, yes, we do have a lack of resources for our roads and our sidewalks, and we had some challenges facing us in the last year, because there had been interest in giving it to this or that. And the board that was here voted to dedicate to sidewalks, to roads, a substantial portion that others wanted to allocate to, to other priorities. And we, and we really stood for putting it in that infrastructure when we had that money available in unincorporated. So I just, I, I think, in all transparency, that has to be clear. It, these, these funds are collected from all, you know, from different taxpayers and in different amounts, and dedicated to different things. That's all under state statute. And I just don't want to leave with the impression that we're, we could use, for instance, you know, some of these not-for-profit monies or what we put into the courts or other things for roads in unincorporated county.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. Let me just ask if we can place this in a little bit of context. When you talk about the, Mr. Fessler, you had a, a number up there, about fourteen-and-a-half million dollars was the number that was recurring spending from the general fund on nonprofits in, in a year. Is that, as compared to the county's eight-billion-dollar budget that we spend in the course of that same year?
Yes. I think, Commissioner, it was on slide twelve, it was, we looked at fiscal, I looked at fiscal year twenty-three, we're around thirty-four million dollars in recurring from general funds, and that was excluding a couple of programs, but that's the ballpark.
Thirty-four million?
That'd be ballpark.
Okay. And, and the total was about eight billion dollars is the, the overall size of the budget?
Correct, yes.
So I think it's important to put into context that for a county this size, with an eight-billion-dollar budget, thirty-four million dollars going to various nonprofits across a wide variety of areas, I, I don't think sounds like a particularly large number. I think that particularly as you start backing out of it and seeing where the money's going and how most of it, to the earlier conversation, is from countywide money, not from unincorporated money, you start to see that as a percentage of the whole budget, you're not talking about a whole lot. And you're also not talking about a whole lot in the sense that even if you, you know, went through it extremely rigorously and tried to get rid of everything you possibly could, it's not going to produce the amount of money that would be, I, I think, make even a noticeable difference countywide in our various different infrastructure challenges. I guess where I'm going with this is that I think it's really appropriate to look very closely at this. I think it's really appropriate to look and see if we need to tighten some things up. But I don't think we should let the, the impression be out there that there's this pot of money that we can tackle that's going to be the panacea to our infrastructure problems. My last, at last count, on Lithia Pinecrest, I, I think it was two-hundred-million dollars to make any considerable progress toward widening that road. And, you know, there's nothing close to that here. So I, I just want to put into context that. And I also want to say that, you know, anywhere you go in this country, if you go into parks, if you go into public spaces, if you go into museums and performing arts centers, if you look on the walls that are written who is funding these things, always at the very top, the public entities are the ones that are leading the way to make sure that we have the types of- leading the way to make sure that we have the types of institutions that many of these nonprofits represent. And so I think we should be very careful about where we spend hard-earned taxpayer dollars, but I don't want to paint all of the nonprofits with one brush. I don't think that rules that cover everything under the sun are necessarily a good idea, because I think that we're just going to end up being inundated with requests to waive those rules when all sorts of good programs and good organizations start making their case for why they should be funded. So I'm looking forward to reading the report and looking forward to the future conversation, but I just don't want the impression to be out there, at least not from me, that somehow this number is some out-of-control number within our budget that represents a huge opportunity for savings, because I don't think that that's ultimately going to prove itself to be the case.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wostel, and then Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, no one has claimed or stated claim that this would provide all of the funding needs in the county. I have pointed out, though, that we are right now basically doing nothing and continuing to do nothing. And you're right, I figured Lithia Pinecrest would come up as an example, and I meant to say it in my original comments. That project has been going on for, or trying to be started for like 10 years, right? So 10 years.
A long time.
So at least that long ago, it would have been way cheaper to start making progress before roads are allowed to erode, as we always like to point out, that it's much cheaper to maintain eroding infrastructure than pay for new infrastructure. And if we continue to do nothing and always make an excuse to do nothing with this money, then we will always have an end result of never having enough money there to maintain and keep up. And to clear up any confusion about the countywide general funds, which is what this report focused on, the total county's budget is not just countywide general funds, correct? The $8 billion that was referenced earlier?
Correct. That includes all funding sources.
Correct. So that's comparing apples to oranges, and it's an unfair analogy when we're just talking about highlighting a potential hole in our current transparency issue of our budget. One thing that I forgot to point out as well is that one nonprofit I found, if you go and look on the county's nonprofit report, you will not find their name. But in reality, they were receiving funding from three different internal departments, because their funding had been baked into the normal budget in a way that none of us would have ever seen unless I asked for that, because it's been going on for this particular one for two decades. So it would be unfair for any of us to be able to identify those specific issues. And that's why throughout this process, I've been advocating that even if they are the crisis center, that I believe every single one of us would argue for at the end of the day, that they just need to be on the nonprofit report and then highlighting the service to which department they're providing it towards for transparency. No one has said once or made a claim that this was going to fix everything, but there is a problem, and we could at least start doing something. Unincorporated roads, Hillsborough County roads within the municipalities such as Columbus, which was a desperate need, all of those things could have been kept up with and maintained in areas that are desperately needed, correct? With the countywide general funds.
The countywide general funds could be used for road improvements within city limits.
And just so the residents that watch this video are clear, that is your chief financial administrator of the county's entire budget, making that transparent. Thank you very much for everybody's time.
Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Kemp, and then I'm going to make a few comments.
Thank you. When we talk about our nonprofit organization, first off, I thank you for your report. I want to say that our nonprofit organizations, they do great work on behalf of our county. One of the things that the county's request from our nonprofit is an audit. We request from the nonprofit is an audit report that comes in. Am I correct?
Commissioner, we don't do that in all cases. There are some nonprofits that receive a more significant amount of funds from us where we have an audit requirement. We don't do that with all of them. Some of them are smaller nonprofits, and what we've found over the years is that to require an audit from them would be financially burdensome to a number of them.
Yes. I know there's a few that we require, because they contacted me last year about what they had to pay for. But I know we're talking about how much it costs us, how much money, and where it's going. But that's not the point. I mean, we as commissioners, we're going to get the flag item sometime this year, and we will have the opportunity to support any organization that we would like to support. Every district is different. Last year, I begged and pleaded with this board to help me in District 3, and the board did. They were all nonprofits. It's a greater need in District 3. It's the underserved community. So if you're not seeing that service being impacted in your district, you need to find out how can you help your district make a difference, because that's what people want in your district, particularly if you're district commissioner. If you're countywide, I would say, hey, take the opportunity and visit the districts to see what's going on. And lastly, I would say, we keep talking about what we could fund for roads and all. We all know, last year, we had the transportation tax on the ballot. Everyone sitting around this desk had the opportunity to help champion, to get it passed. We had the opportunity, even as candidates, to help get it passed. Now we can sit here and say, oh, well, the dollars could have gone that, we could have had everything funded in 2022. Now, when CIT, is it CIT?
CIT.
CIT comes up, let us get involved to make sure, as we're talking now, what needs to happen, that we get whatever the administration by the way is going to bring before us, that we get it passed. And then we can do all these things in our county. We can do all these things in our district, we can do it countywide. But sitting here just talking about, well, the money now, that's history. Okay? I just want to be clear, it's history. But we're going to bring a tax back, and this board needs to take some action, instead of saying how, in my district, a countywide, what they don't want, well, this is how it's going to be paid for. Okay? I'm one, say all the time, I don't like a new tax, but if I know I got to pay for something, it's okay. It's okay to do it. It's the same at home. You want to upkeep, or you want water coming through the roof? What are you going to do? You're going to put a roof on. It's the same with the county, we have needs. So let's stop sitting around the desk, bringing up old stuff and how money can go. When the tax come for us, let's be prepared to vote for something and take it and help champion to get it passed and improve our county. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Oh, be fast. Yeah. The big issue that I hope doesn't get lost, and the issue I have, is just the accountability for the not-for-profits that we're funding. I can tell all of you all that if you were given personal money to somebody else and you were expecting to be paid back, and you were executing a note and mortgage, you would probably check their credit, you would probably ask for a bank statement, you'd probably ask for a tax return. We need to do the same thing when it comes to spending taxpayer dollars on anything, on anything for that matter. So that's my big issue with it. I'm not saying that any of these not-for-profits don't provide a wealth for this community, or we would end up spending more money to do it ourselves. That's a possibility. The problem is, we don't know. And we don't know if, as far as qualifications to receive these funds, we've just got to put them in place. That's just smart government, it's smart business, it's smart everything. So that's my last comment. Thanks.
And I'm going to make my comments brief here. I want to start by saying, I think this was an excellent discussion, one that we needed to have. I want to thank Commissioner Wostel for initiating this item. I do agree with him that there is a problem and we can start to make improvements. Nonprofits play a critical role in our, you know, in our quality of life and service delivery needs. Historically, I don't think I've flagged that many. I know recently, Community Food Pantry, Positive Coaching Alliance come to mind. I'll probably flag a couple additional ones this year, but I can promise you, they'll be very small in nature. That being said, I fully support tightening up this process in order to reflect more transparency and ensure that our dollars are being spent wisely and that measurable outcomes will occur. I think Commissioner Wostel made a couple of excellent points, particularly with respect to the county staff time and work that they put into implementing many of our contracts and putting the contract together. I know on some of these, they go, spend considerable time and effort in doing that. So I certainly support any recommendations that can improve that process. I think, and another big challenge, and Commissioner Wostel pointed this out as well, is that many of these nonprofits are in various departments or budgets or allotments, whatever you want to call it, so it makes it challenging sometimes to determine exactly how much each, you know, a particular nonprofit is getting. This is Commissioner Wostel's item, so I'm very sensitive not to steal any of his thunder. I look forward to the next discussion. I've got, you know, a couple of suggestions that, you know, I'd like to see implemented, but I do think it's a conversation that we needed to have and that we can, we should always be looking to see how we can improve our processes, and I think we'll be able to do that, that will ensure that our quality nonprofits are, you know, we're still partnering with, but same time that we can just ensure more transparency and that the outcomes that we want to occur do happen. So with that, we have had a motion to accept the report by Commissioner Wostel. It was seconded by, was it Cohen? Commissioner Cohen? No other comments? Please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Good discussion. Bonnie?
Thank you. The final item or future discussion items?
Commissioner Owen?
And I have a couple. May I do them back to back?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman? Sure. Okay. As you all know, the growth happening in the unincorporated part of the county is just, it's just out of hand. And as I've been on this dais for a short period of time, it has been real difficult. I know that I've been extremely difficult on development, especially when it comes to multi-unit properties in East County. Another thing that's going to continue to happen is the downtown Tampa, West Shore, University area, and West Brandon will continue to be the job centers for the Tampa Bay region, as it should. It's an undeniable fact that our highway system is the backbone of our economy and job creation. If we lose sight of that basic fact, I guarantee you that we will lose the economic edge in the Tampa Bay region. I want to look at the future here, and when I, these items I'm bringing are very bold. And it's looking to the future past when all of us will be sitting here on this dais. But we have got to create some type of relief for 75 in East and South County, as well as crosstown connections. The folks in my county were just choked, and the way that it's looking with funding, just from the county, it's going to be very, very difficult to widen roads and to improve that quality of life as we continue to grow. So my future items first, the first one is, I would like county staff to bring back a report to this board in coordination with the Expressway Authority and FDOT for the potential for extending the crosstown all the way to Big Bend Road. The report should include the following: congestion relief in South County, funding possibilities, other constraints and opportunities. The second item, which is somewhat related but different, I would like county staff to bring back a report to this board in coordination with the appropriate agencies regarding a potential new I-75 interchange around Hillsborough and Manatee County line. The report should have the following and any other relevant information: a summary of any previous studies from Hillsborough County and/or the other agencies regarding the new interchange, potential advantages and disadvantages on the new interchange at the border, the growth happening in North Manatee County, framework to leverage new interchange investment for responsible and smart growth in and around the interchange, and options to mitigate traffic impacts to current residents in Sundance if the interchange is built.
Bonnie, did you get all that?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I've got a last thing. This issue, this past weekend, my district was just rocked with a real tragedy. Kensington James Winchester was five months old. She went to be with our Lord and Savior on March 20, 2023. A driver struck Kensington and her mom off Highway 72 and County Road 39. Again, this has just absolutely rocked our community. I did not have the pleasure to know the family before this incident happened, but they are pillars of the community. I could not believe the attendance at the funeral home in South County. I did go to the funeral, and I did call the mother, and I spoke to her while she was in ICU. I answered a lot of her concerns about that particular road, and I actually attended the funeral. And let me tell you something, I have never done that. Maybe some of you commissioners have stood in that long line to, it's just hard to even talk about, to look in the face of the parents that just lost a child and to see that small casket behind them. It devastated me, and it was a very, very difficult day, and it was a difficult weekend for our community. I've already contacted staff about this particular road, so 672 and 39, just so you all know, it's a very remote area. There are lots of trucks that just barrel through this area. I went out there and took a look at it over the weekend. I saw about four or five people blow the stop sign. People are not following the rules, and of course, it's hard for us to stop careless drivers, right? But we sure can put safety precautions in mind. And I wasn't asking this one. This is one I was kind of demanding to staff, and I want to thank staff for getting on top of this quickly, because we can do things. We've done it on 674, where we had rumble strips, a red flashing light on approach or at the stop sign, and then clearing the vegetation. So I know that our staff is already working on that. That is not the future item. The future item that I would like is, I would like to, we have a board policy, Section 09.01.05.01, which allows for the implementation of honorary road designations. I know that this designation is kind of unique in nature, and we don't use it too much, but I am directing staff to bring forth an item at our next scheduled regular meeting to be brought for a vote to set an honorary road designation in honor of Kensington James Winchester for County Road 39. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. And just related to your last item, I've asked for a number of years, but I know it's under study. I'm not sure what the, what is, where it is at, but the corridor study that I've been very interested in seeing, particularly east-west roads across South County, it's one of the items that I think I brought to this board's attention even in the more recent times, and have, again, looked at it in terms of where we are missing connections. And we do, I believe, have something out there, but I really wonder, in terms of formalizing it, between Big Bend and 574, I guess going Ruskin to, there's 19th, and then there's 574. But in between there, there's a huge gap where I know there's an east-west need, and we almost lost it at one point by permitting perhaps development on top of it where it was prospectively. So I think that that could be perhaps done also in terms of the connections.
Bonnie, you get all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No other comments, and we're adjourned. Thank you.